Good morning, good morning, everyone. If you're new here, make sure you subscribe and everyone watching this video, like the video, that helps tremendously. When you like the video, that gets this video recommended a lot here on YouTube to other people that think like us and would like this content. I think everybody would like this show. Who could not like this program, huh? So liking it helps share it with people that we know will like it. Here we go. It's showtime. Gotta clear out my instrument. Sorry, guys. Alrighty, yes, yes. Welcome to the program. My name is Brian Craig. You are listening to Florida's longest running radio show, The Steve Kane Show. It's four minutes after six o'clock in the morning, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. So much going on, so much to talk about. I'm gonna do something that I would not normally do on this program, and it's because I was watching Greg Kelly last night on Newsmax, and I gotta tell you, this Stitchfeld guy, he is so damn good. Do you guys, you guys all wa- do you guys all watch Newsmax TV? I love Newsmax TV. I like Greg Kelly, and I was, I was watching him last night, so, and, and he, well, he's the inspiration for today's show, but Stitchfeld, he is so good. He comes on at eight o'clock on Newsmax TV, and the poor guy's going up against Tucker Carlson. And I don't have a lot of use for Fox News, but Tucker Carlson's alright, but Stitchfeld, he is awesome. And, you know, so you should try to check him out, but you know, if you, if you have the Newsmax app, which is completely free, okay? It's completely free on any mobile device, I, you can even download it on your TV. I got it on my TV, and I also have it on my iPhone and everything. All the, all the shows, those nighttime shows on Newsmax TV are archived right there for free, and, and high definition too, so you can, you can check it out. about 10 or 11 minutes long. That's what we would not normally do. We usually play things in sound bites. But I'm gonna play the whole thing of this New York mother who confronted her local school board over critical race theory. And I had a couple of clips of it that I was gonna play on yesterday's show, and I didn't get to it because, you know, we had, we had some issues with, you know, some calls yesterday, the guy that was divorced and all of that stuff, and the show took a different direction. And I was gonna get into this yesterday, but I only had a couple of sound bites. And what Greg Kelly did last night on Newsmax TV is he, he played the whole thing, and I saw the whole thing in its entirety for the first time, watching Greg Kelly last night on Newsmax, and I said, you know what? I just gotta play the whole thing. I gotta play the whole thing. And I am definitely going to do that. Diana, could you explain what you mean? No WNN until 7:00 AM, explain that, what you're, where at, what are you talking, I'll check into it. This, this critical race theory is such an important issue so far as the next couple of elections. And I was talking to you yesterday about this, and I did mention it last week. Critical race theory is not new. The reason that it's become controversial is not because it's the news story that's in vogue this news cycle. What's happening is, for the very first time, parents are seeing inside their kids' classrooms on a very regular basis because of all this Zoom distance learning that's going on. And even in places where kids are going back to school, parents across this country are getting more involved in their kid's school, even if they're back in the classroom, because they've been so involved for the past year because of all the shutdowns around the country. And they're finding out what's really going on in their kids' classrooms. And, you know, this is, this is the deal. You know, these, these left-wing teachers have been in the, in the classroom on their best behavior for a while in front of the parents, but after a year or so, their true colors are coming out. And this critical race theory is all out there right now, and it is huge, and it's a big, it's a big problem for the left. But it's a great opportunity for MAGA, for the Republicans, for Trump. Because parents that are Hispanic, that are black, that are white, and what other ethnicity you wanna come up with are outraged by this, completely outraged by this. And what, what they're doing is, they're creating a new group of people that are MAGA. That's gonna help us at the local election level, like the House races, I consider local elections, I know it's a national law, but you know what I mean. You know? And this, and, and it's a very big opportunity for us because people, you know, sometimes you'll have things like, you know, parents are always concerned, there's always issues that come up over the years that involve schools, like Common Core, okay? You know, people were outraged about Common Core, but Common Core was more abstract, more cerebral. Critical race theory is just plain, old-fashioned racism, and very nasty racism. And people are pissed. People are pissed, including this mom that confronted her local school board, and the reaction of her local school board is so typical of these Democrats in office. They, they don't think, they, they don't care what, what, what voters think, what parents think. That's not what they're there for. And, you know, we have very, it's unfortunate, this, this critical race theory division that is happening in some ways, because it's seen, it's seen as a black versus white issue. The people behind this radical critical race racism business in our school system are a small radical fringe inside the black community. And, and black people in this country are being painted with a very broad brush with this. I don't think most black people agree with this critical race theory. Oh yeah, there are some, but they're, they're a radical fringe inside the black community. You know, in, in America, our culture is the American culture, it's a diverse culture, but we have shared ideas that our culture are supposed to have. This critical race theory, if you change the ethnicities, could be right out of the Ku Klux Klan. And maybe even in some instances, worse. So President Trump, as the rally season is about to begin, and MAGA's going, you know, coming back strong, critical race theory is very, very important. Now, I'm gonna play this in its entirety. It's 10 or 11 minutes long. We would not normally do that. We normally would play things in sound bites. But not only am I gonna play it, I don't, I don't know, I, I might stop down and talk as I play it, I don't know, I might just play it for you. I'll, I'll know as it's going on. But this, this woman here, she's just a parent, she's, she's gonna be more than that, though. Her name is Tatiana Abraham, and what I find interesting is, she's a Christian woman married to a Muslim man, and she's plenty pissed. And this, this was a local school board in, in New York where this happened. So let me just start playing it, and I would certainly like to hear your calls on it as well.
Good evening. My name is Tatiana Abraham, and I'm here for the first time. I'm here tonight not only as a community member, but as a parent in this district. Recently, you sent out a survey wanting to know why parents were not voting yes for this budget. So my, my situation, my vote for no is a little different. I think the Board of Education and those sitting on the panels are thieves. I think they're liars and have committed treason against our children. My message to this district and the members of the Board of Ed, stop indoctrinating our children. Stop teaching our children to hate the police. Stop teaching our children that if they don't agree with the LGBT community, that they're homophobic. You have no idea each child's life, you don't know what their family lifestyle consists of, you don't know the makeup of their, of their life. You have children like mine, who is Muslim, and I'm Christian, and everyone would think, they would never believe that of her, right? Because the way she looks, or according to Ms. Cyrus, she's too pasty white.
Wesley, five dollars super chat, thank you. Trying to shut her up.
Up, up here.
See, she's trying to shut her up, right? Doesn't like, the school board member doesn't like her talking, so they're trying to, trying to shut her up here.
We're, we're not allowed to use names. If you have something you'd like to discuss about a specific person, you can call the superintendent or leave your info for her to call you tomorrow.
Why are we not allowed to discuss names? Why am I not allowed, when they purposely themselves expose themselves on social media, talking about calling for the death of a former president? Or saying that any child that doesn't believe in Black Lives Matter should be canceled out? Is this what my tax dollars is paying for? You're teaching my children and other children that if they believe in God Almighty, they're part of a cult? These educators put their own names out there. We have Mr. Barry, who took it upon himself with Ms. Cyrus to create a curriculum.
That should be it.
Do you want the proof? I have the proof. You created a curriculum of Black Panther indoctr-
See, that, like that guy in the background, that's, that's one of the school board members. The school board members keep chiming in, trying to shut her up. See, these public hearings aren't supposed to amount to anything. They're just to allow people to vent, to feel that they have a role, and then the corrupt school board members just move along, move along, nothing to see here. Well, this has gone viral, people, and, and this woman, she'll probably, if she doesn't end up on that school board, is gonna end up in Congress.
Barry, who took it upon himself with Ms. Cyrus to create a curriculum.
That should be it.
See, there he goes.
The proof, I have the proof. You created a curriculum of Black Panther indoctrination.
Ma'am.
You use taxpayers' dollars.
Can I ask you one more time? I, I have no issue hearing what you have to say, but why, why can we not let the public speak? Why can't we let the public know that you're teaching our children to go out and murder our police officers? Do you want the proof? I have the proof. Is that what scares you, the proof? That a parent actually standing up against all of you? Is that what scares you, to call out the names of these people? You work for me. I don't work for you. You have a duty, we are entrusting our children to you. We teach our children morals, values, when they grow up to commit crimes and end up in prison and kill a police officer. It's our fault? No, it's your fault. You're emotionally abusing our children and mentally abusing them. You're demoralizing them by teaching them communist values. This is still America, ma'am. And as long as I'm standing here on this good ground, earth of God, I will fight. And I'm not, this is not the last-
See, that, that one, one of the school board members, he said he'll, let me go back, hear that, he said, he says, "I'll walk out."
As long as I'm standing here on this good ground, earth of God, I will fight. And I'm not, this is not the last of me you will see.
And this is, this is absolutely stunning.
I'm retired. I have nothing else better to do.
Uh-oh.
We can do it peacefully, or we can take it to the highest courts, because you know and I know, I'm not the only parent fighting this all across America right now. Schools are trying to poison our children's minds, teaching them about things that they have no right to be taught in school.
So, so normally, I'm just gonna, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna just give you just a feedback for a moment. I have no problem having a peaceful discussion. This is not a peaceful discussion.
Okay, now, now notice, this is, this is the head of the school board, at least she's running this meeting, and she's trying to brand this woman a radical, even though she has an Islamic name, branding someone with an Islamic name a radical, that's not too politically correct to our Democrat school board member here.
Still discussion. No, that's your opinion. See, here we go again. This is peaceful. To me, this is peaceful. Well, I'm not burning, looting, and murdering. This is peaceful.
I did not accuse you of that, but I would, don't have a problem having a conversation with you, a peaceful conversation, which is, this is not.
$6.95 per child in the middle school to buy a curriculum from ReadToMe.org that wasn't even approved by the, by the Board of Ed. The administrators took it upon themselves to buy these books with taxpayer dollars while COVID is going on. How many families are struggling to pay their mortgages? Listen, by all means, you wanna teach kids these things, fine, don't do it on my dollar, don't infringe on my religious beliefs, don't infringe. Do you know who makes up the majority of this district? Children from police officers' families. Blues, back the blue children. Do you know what these children feel like when they come home? Have you spoken to them? No, you're silencing them. This whole cancel culture, you're silencing the children. Where are their rights? They have no rights. Because if they don't believe in the indoctrination, the demonic, twisted, sneaky, vile acts and, and, and education, if you call it that, that you're teaching our children, they don't agree with that. They're either homophobic, they're part of a cult, they, they, they're racist. What, what's racist? Who defines racist? Why, 'cause I'm, do you know what race I am? Do you? You don't. You don't even have an, an idea. I could be black, I could be white, I could be Asian, you don't know. Who are you to determine that? Who is anyone to determine that? You know what? Children in the school system? Children, like other children, they don't look at color. Black and children, black and white children, Hispanic children, you know why they get along? Because they don't look at each other's color. So you're the racist, not them, not us. You're judging and dividing. You're causing segregation, everything that we fought for, everything that I fought for for years. So you have the right to stand here and tell me, "I'm not allowed to mention a name," when the person, the Mr. Barry and Ms. Cyrus themselves? You have ELA teachers giving out assignments on police murders? Police are bad? You want the proof?
Okay.
Because we have it. So what policy do you have?
See, they don't know they're being picked up on mic. I heard the one lady on the school board, she went, "Ah," she sighed, "we have to stop it." She says, "We have to stop it."
"How to mention a name?" "When the person, the Mr. Barry and Ms. Cyrus themselves?" "You have ELA teachers giving out assignments on police murders? Police are bad?" "You want the proof?"
Okay.
"Because we have it."
See?
So what policy-
We have, do you hear that? She said, "We have to stop this," the school board member said. Not critical race theory, we have to stop outspoken parents.
Teachers are not allowed to go on social media and indoctrinate. They took an oath, a responsibility, and they're, they're going against everything that they stand for.
End.
End. Hear the other one, "end."
End it?
End it? I have to end it?
So why? Why, you're on my dollar, why?
Well, actually, I, I work for nothing doing this.
Oh, you work for nothing, oh.
I do. This is a volunteer.
Every taxpayer's dollar here. We have rights. We have rights.
And, and you're making general assumptions?
No, I'm not making assumptions, I'm not. I know what I'm speaking about. See, I don't agree with you, so it's an assumption.
Well, I'm not gonna engage in a back and forth with you.
Of course not.
This. So if you would like to make an appointment, I would be happy to sit with the superintendent.
I don't, I don't want to. The superintendent, the assistant superintendent already sent an email and stated that they had no idea that these books were being put on, in, in the students' hands. The superintendent already stated that they had no idea that the funds of taxpayers were supporting this Black Panthers. Do you know Black Panthers is a domestic terrorist group? Do you know that it was, it was, it was condemned as a, as a terrorist group? Do you know they killed cops? I have a problem when you're trying to kill a police officer. I have a big problem with that. I have a problem when teachers are passing out flyers, recruiting children to go to, to the courthouse, to protest Black Lives Matters, when you have people sitting with, with, with signs that says, "All cops are bastards." Really? All cops are bastards? No, I think you people are, because the way you're acting, and the way you're treating our children, and our police officers, and making them believe that it's okay to abuse them, I'll be damned if I'm gonna sit here and let you do that.
You, you-
No, I'm, I will become your worst nightmare, because I'm gonna stand here and keep fighting and fighting and fighting and fighting. And if not, I can actually go out, get signatures? What happens if we stop paying school taxes? You're gonna arrest all the community? The majority of the community? No, I don't think so. This won't be the last of me. I want everyone to know what's going on, because you're hiding it. You're hiding it. You know who does that? Communists do that. That's what you're doing, recruiting children. Children! You're recruiting children to hate our police officers, how dare you? You have a librarian in the high school passing out Black Lives Matter pins. When a student asks for a blue lie, why would I have that? Why would she have that? What did you do for Police, Police Week? Why don't you tell me, sir? What is it you wanna tell me?
School board member she's talking to.
You've had your two minutes.
You had your two minutes, get outta here with your damn kids! And a, what a jerk. This guy, he doesn't sound like a parent, he sounds like a grandparent.
Two minutes, I can, I can go as long as I like.
No, that's not the point.
No? Oh. Who, where does it say that I can't?
We get it, Diana. You don't have to keep repeating it every three seconds.
A board policy, who, who makes these board policies?
The board.
The board, and who pays the board?
No one.
Nobody? The chair you're sitting on, we pay for it. The lights that are on, we pay for it. We pay for everything. You wanna silence me because I spoke the truth? I spoke the truth. Everyone out there heard me, whether they agree or they don't, they're gonna start looking into it. And now you're go, now you're exposed. That's all. It's going to end. This indoctrination and hatred towards our police officers, this systematic racism and cancel culture is gonna end. You came to the wrong school district to do this, okay? You need to respect every child. So therefore, no politics should be discussed in school, rather it be conservatism, democratic, liberalism? You gave a, a, a survey after the elections. Why? Why did you ask students who they voted for? What did it matter? No answer, huh? You have no answers for me. I, I didn't expect an answer. That's okay, though, we'll get them some way or another. Same way you can't show us where all our money goes, right? That's what I-
Did you hear the, yeah, one of the school board members, he said, "Oh, God." They're in a panic.
That's what I thought.
You know, President Trump should have her at the first rally. He should have her on stage at the first rally, have her come out and talk for a couple of minutes about this. What do you guys think about that? All right, we'll take our break. Very late, this is our first break, but we'll take our break, come back, I wanna hear your calls on this. 1-888-GO-KANE, 1-884-665-2631, 884-465-2631. We'll talk more about it after this break. Do not go anywhere.
Hi, my name is Tom Laporta, the owner of Laporta Contracting Roofing and Restoration. We have been in the roofing and construction industry since 1982. We are state of Florida certified roofing and general contractors focusing on residential and commercial roofing, impact windows, and building restoration. The 2021 hurricane season is upon us. If you have noticed any water stains on your ceiling, or if your roof is older than 15 years, you will want to call us to come out and evaluate your roof. Our services run from minor repairs to complete new roof systems. We install every kind of roof, from regular ashful shingles, clay or concrete tiles, standing metal seam, wood shakes, and slate tile systems. Call us at 954-604-4602 for a free home inspection and estimate. Again, that number is 954-604-4602.
Hello, I'm Mike Lindell, inventor of MyPillow, here to tell you about my Giza Dream Bed Sheets. I made sure that they would be everything you'd ever want in a sheet set. I started with the world's finest cotton called Giza. It's only grown in a region where the Sahara Desert, the Nile River, and the Mediterranean Sea all meet. The long staple cotton makes my Giza Dream Sheets ultra soft and durable. They come with extra wide pillowcases to fit over any pillow, and extra deep pockets to fit over any mattress. Not only that, they come with my 60-day money-back guarantee and a 10-year warranty. And now you can get the best sheets ever for the best price ever. When you buy one of my Giza Dream Bed Sheet Sets, you'll get another one absolutely free. I personally guarantee that they'll be the most comfortable sheets you'll ever own.
Use the promo code KANE to check out, and when you buy a set of Giza Dream Sheets, get a second set free, but you've gotta use the promo code KANE, K-A-N-E, at mypillow.com, or call 1-800-716-4879.
Listen to The Steve Kane Show on iHeartRadio. Just search for-
Well, I mean, that's a, that's an amazing woman. That's an amazing woman. Don't you wish, uh, don't we, don't you wish we had some Republicans in Congress like that? Oh my goodness. You know, well, we have a couple, Matt Gaetz and Marjorie Taylor Greene, but she, I mean, she even makes Marjorie Taylor Greene look mild. Yeah, I know, that's absolutely amazing. You know what we just saw there? We just saw the new Joe the Plumber. Remember Joe the Plumber? Just happened to bump into Obama, and Obama started quoting from Mao's Little Red Book, you know? "You gotta spread the wealth around," you know? This is, this is a Joe the Plumber moment. Millions of people have seen that video, not just on television, not just on radio, it's going, it's gone viral on the internet. Millions of people have seen that. It has not gone unnoticed with the evil forces of the Republican establishment and the Democrats and the acrostas, okay, over at the Clinton News Network and MS13BC and all this stuff. This woman, who should be a guest at all of these Trump rallies that are coming up, a, a guest of President Trump, she should be out there speaking at the events with President Trump. No doubt about it, she's retired. She's got nothing better to do, other than save our school systems and our children from this racist indoctrination education they're giving them, which is awesome. By the way, if you're on hold, stand by, I'll go to the phones in a moment. There's only one opening on the board right now, at 1-888-GO-KANE, 1-884-652-2631. This woman, this woman is, is, right now, the Democrats are starting the investigations into her. They're looking for something to discredit her. They wanna discredit her bad, because she's a, she's a clear and present danger to them. Did you hear how well-prepared she was? The, the Joe the Plumber of this, of this time. All right, let's go to our phones here on the radio. Good morning. Good morning, you're on the air.
Hi, Brian.
Yes, what's your name?
Oh, it's Vanessa.
Hey, Vanessa.
I love your shirt.
Oh, thank you.
I got mine, I got mine, and I like yours at the bottom of the sequel. Mine's just Trump 2024.
Yeah, the shirt I'm, I'm wearing a t-shirt today, you guys on YouTube can see, but you guys on the radio can't, it says, "Trump 2024, The Sequel." Yeah.
I like that. I, I worked at a Bluegrass Festival where no one was wearing a mask last weekend. I got nothing but compliments.
Awesome.
Yeah. Um, you know, I kinda have a thing, and it's, it's not political race theory especially, but my grandson's going to school where the teacher continued to vilify President Trump, you know, late in the year last year. And my son found out finally, and because Alex kept coming home with a bad attitude, they put anger into these children. And, um, we didn't get any satisfaction. I'll tell you that he ended up letting him continue to go to the vocational school for diesel mechanics, but he pulled him out of the classroom, and we did it online.
Well, you know, the, the problem is, while, you know, while we focus in on congressional elections and governors and presidents, which are important, we ignore what's going on in our school systems. And George Soros and all of these left-wing radicals that are trying to undermine the United States of America have been recruiting ra- you know, when I went to school, I never, from K through 12th grade, I didn't know what the political affiliation of any of my teachers were. I had one teacher, I had one teacher in eighth grade who showed us, because it was during President Reagan's second inauguration, she did show us his second inauguration live in class, she probably was a Republican, you know, to do that, but I never heard a teacher tell me who they voted for, who they didn't vote for, they didn't have a button letting me know, like these leftists do. But, you know, the, the problem that we have, this country went to hell during the Vietnam War. The Vietnam War is when these radicals took over our education- The Vietnam War is when these radicals took over our education system and were a couple of generations into these snowflake teachers that are racist, anti-American, and they feel that they are activists opposing the Klan when they oppose Republicans and things like this, and they, they feel very justified in what it is that they're doing. But the one good thing we can take out of COVID is that parents started seeing what was going on in their kids' classrooms through these Zoom chats online, and they're pissed.
Right. Oh, and, and they put anger into the children. I mean, why is Alex keep coming home with this attitude?
Well, and you heard her say something there. They, after the election, they sent a survey to, they surveyed the, the kids to find out how their parents voted. You know, you remember a couple of years ago, the Democrats were getting pediatricians to ask kids how many guns their parents have at home, you know, and that's what the Nazis did. They're trying to get your kids to turn you in and rat you out, you know, and not that you're doing anything criminal, but they're using the children to spy on the, on the parents.
Wow.
You know, that, that college professor at Yale that was talking about shooting white people in the head, you know, you talk that way in a, in a school, you get arrested. After Columbine, you know, this, this Parkland shooting, um, happened because that animal was talking that way, and no one did anything about it. Klebold and Harris and Columbine were talking that way. That professor should be arrested and investigated. And by the way, she should lose her medical license too, you know?
I agree. Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Well, listen, thanks for the call. Good morning, you're on the radio.
Good morning, Brian, how are you?
All right, what's your name?
Scott and Gary, bright-eyed bushy-tailed.
Oh, hey, Gary. What's going on?
You know, Tatianna, she did, she pointed it out my way, you know, and with my boys, when I'm home, I ask them every day, I have this Wisconsin, ask the boys every day, what did you learn in school today? You know, because I wanna know what's going on, you know, with their subjects, what they learned today about social studies, DLA, whatever it is, because I wanna know if there's something that is being portrayed to them that I don't want them to know. So like with Tatianna bringing this all out, you need to spend time with your kids to find out what they're being taught. And she brought that all out, Tatianna, and that's what every parent should do with their children every single day, is when they come home from school, learn what they did and find out if they're being taught this critical race theory.
Well, you know, when, when my daughter was in school, from kindergarten all the way through high school, you know, you know, because it's three different schools she went to, right, elementary, middle and high, my, my wife and I, we were at the schools so much, at every one of those schools, they knew us by name, you know, the teachers, the office staff, the principals, you know, you gotta, you gotta be involved so that you can, you, you, not only do you know what's going on, but you're in a position to do something about it.
Right, right, because even like my niece and nephew who are in a totally different school district.
Randall, I have a Super Chat.
I literally tell them, I, because I wanna know, because you, you kinda know how a liberal thinks and speaks, you know, it's like my niece and nephew, I ask them, I was like, well, is she a liberal or is she a conservative?
Yeah.
And my niece will say, no, I think she's a liberal the way she talks. I was like, you gotta watch that stuff. I was like, if they're teaching you that, I wanna know about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, what I told the last caller, my entire time in public school, I never had an inkling to the political affiliation of any of my teachers, any of them, and that's the way it should be. But these liberal, you know, and I'll tell you another thing to teachers out there, stop saying your kids, these are not your kids. And this is an arrogance of them. They think they're their kids to, to mold and shape into what they want. Go get your own kids, if you can find a guy to marry you, you know? They're not your kids, teachers.
And I believe she should be at every single Trump rally. I really believe that.
She's a, she's a superstar right now. She's a superstar right now. Now, now, I, I understand she's very charismatic and outspoken and, you know, and, but, but, and, and keeping her to a limited time with President Trump may be difficult, but she should be at every Trump rally, she should be flying around America with President Trump, talking about critical race theory, and I promise you, President Trump saw this, he watches Greg Kelly on Newsmax TV too.
And I hope she does end up at every single rally with them.
That'd be amazing. You heard it here first, people. You heard it here first. All right, Gary, I gotta run for a break. Thanks for the call. If you're on hold, stand by, there's only one opening where Gary was. We'll be right back.
Stop paying an outrageous fortune for your tires. Go easy on your budget and buy your tires at Friendly Tire and Market, where they have all the major brands like Goodyear and Firestone at discount prices that absolutely can't be beat. Steve Kane's tires for his Toyota van, at the other shops, $175 a tire. At Friendly Tire, just $75 a tire. That's a $100 savings per tire. Tires for my daughter Emily's car, $135 at the shops around town. The price at Friendly Tire, only $65. That's a $70 savings per tire. These prices are out the door and on the road, free mounting and balancing and no added charges. Friendly Tire have a great selection of good-use tires too, starting at just $30 for most cars. Call my good buddy Friendly Mike at Friendly Tire. Tell him what you drive and he will give you a great low price right over the phone. Online, friendlytire.net.
Now that things are opening up again, employers are hiring. Need a drug test before your job interview? Stop by Any Lab Test Now of Boca or Any Lab Test Now of Coral Springs and get tested. No doctor's order needed, no appointment necessary, just walk right in. No insurance, no problem, because they offer the lowest prices on all their thousands of lab tests. Any Lab Test Now of Boca is located in the Saddle Creek Plaza, where the Western Beef is, south of Palmetto Park Road and north of Hillsborough, on the east side of 441 State Road 7. Call 561-237-5009. Any Lab Test Now of Coral Springs is located on the southeast corner of University Drive in Ramblewood, near the Coral Square Mall in Coral Springs. Call 954-906-5983. Make sure to tell them you heard about them on the Steve Kane Show.
If you suffer with diabetes, did you know there's a 25% chance that you will develop a foot ulcer at some point in your life? And foot ulcers, when you have diabetes, can lead to severe health consequences, up to and including amputation. Now Medicare recognizes the importance of preventative foot care and has provided coverage for those of you who are at-risk patients. I wanna introduce you to my good friends at the Sole Authority. With the Sole Authority, at little or no cost, you can receive your very own pair of therapeutic shoes made specially for diabetics. You're probably not aware, but as a diabetic Medicare recipient, you are entitled to one pair of high-quality diabetic shoes with three custom inserts per year. These are not the ugly Frankenstein shoes. These are name-brand shoes. They're stylish, they'll provide you with the extra width and extra depth to stop diabetic foot problems before they begin. Oftentimes, amputation due to diabetes is preventable, and one of the preventable measures that is most effective is wearing the.
By the way, everybody, make sure you like the video. Like, share, and if you're not, subscribe, all right? We're coming back.
Or online at thesoleauthority.com. That's T-H-E-S-O-L-E authority.com. Tell them Steve Kane sent you.
Listen to the Steve Kane Show on iHeartRadio. Just search for.
All right, welcome back. I'm Brian Craig. This is the Steve Kane Show. Back to our phones, you're on the radio. Good morning. Jacqueline, $20 super sticker, thank you. Everyone think Jacqueline.
Good morning, Brian. This is.
Tim, $5 super chat. Hey, Denise. Everyone think Tim too.
I was calling because I actually.
Please mention Tabitha and Kennedy as well. Really? We'll talk about that.
To work with my grandson who did Zoom through his private school in Houston, Texas. And what we discovered is exactly what you were mentioning, is that you learn a lot Zooming your children. Zoom is a window to the classroom.
Yeah.
You, you actually discover what, how the teacher presents things and what material they're teaching. And he was only in the third grade, so he would, if he were to be asked, what did you learn in school today, there would be no way for him to come home and say, I learned today that because I'm white, I'm racist. We actually, as the class continues on Zoom, she presented books for him to read that talked about white racism and how, uh, black people were, uh, being punished and, uh, he spent almost the entire year.
I mean, it seems like black people are running the country. 12% of the population seem to be driving everything, uh, so I don't know what, what this disenfranchisement and systemic racism is all about.
Well, we had to put our foot down at the point at which it, it kinda like slapped me in the face as he was doing Zoom. I was right there with him, um, helping him and working with him. I was like his resource while he was in Zoom. But we, we put down our foot and said he was not going to be allowed to read. One, one of the books was called Chocolate Fever, and it took a simple Google for me to see that the book is known for being, um, anti-white and it also had bullying of children in it and violence and, and we told the school, no, he's not reading this book, give him an alternative, uh, assignment.
Yeah, what'd they give him? What was the alternative assignment? You gotta be careful of that too.
They gave him, well, they gave him tons of busy work.
Oh, yeah.
It, it was like punishment.
Mm-hmm.
It truly was. It was like he was being.
Well, you know, it's, 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 it's tough for a parent to get involved because then you make your kid a target of their wrath, you know, and they'll find other ways to screw him. You know what I mean? So it's, 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 it's a, it's a real tightrope for, for parents. But this, see, this critical race theory is an opportunity, an opportunity. Here we have a whole nother group of people, parents that are not typically politically involved that are pissed, and this is an opportunity for us to get them together and join the MAGA movement, if they're not already a part of it.
Exactly. But.
See, this is about making America great again. See, this is what Trump is talking about. You got these radical revolutionaries who have been brainwashed from these communists starting in the Vietnam War era that infiltrated our, our, our university systems. Now they're in the public school system, and this is, uh, this is the result, the Soviet Union still lives in our education system, and that's, that's what this is all about. This is how you bring, this is how you bring down a, a society.
Well, we already have a plan to make sure that before school starts this year, we will see the curriculum, we will see the title of all books that are being, uh, used in our classrooms, because we have two children in that school, and private schools are not immune from this because they're in private.
Well, in private school, you've got the option to get out of there, you know, because you're paying them. In public school, it's a, you know, it's, your, your options are more limiting. But what they don't like, what these radicals don't like is attention. You know, what these radical principals and teachers hate more than anything else are interested parents.
Well, we're still waiting to see, because we actually wrote a very long survey at the end of the school year regarding the material that was used in the classroom and the actions that would.
Well, listen, I, I gotta, I gotta run, but I appreciate the call. Um, I gotta, if you're on hold, stand by, I gotta take a break in a moment, because I went long in the first segment, and if I don't take a break here on time, it's like a traffic jam. So I apologize for the short segment, but someone mentioned homeschooling. No, 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 no. Homeschooling's not the answer to this. Homeschooling's what exposed it over this year of COVID. We, we, we've gotta change what's going on because what's happened, it was bad enough when it was just the colleges. Now it's, it's K through 12 education, probably pre-K through 12 education. These are liberal and, these are liberal radical indoctrination centers, and they're churning out a bunch of AOCs with every graduating class. No, homeschooling is not an, homeschooling is a surrender. Let's take our last break of the first hour. Back with more of your calls. Every line on the board is lit. My name is Brian Craig. This is the Steve Kane Radio Show, Florida's longest-running radio show. We'll be right back.
Attention seniors, Debbie from Iowa Advisors has launched Iowa Advocates. Iowa Advocates will make all of your doctor's appointments for you, handle your pharmacy issues, including refills, billing problems, they'll even make sure your prescriptions are filled. They'll review your doctor's bills to make sure they are correct. If you're in the hospital and you need an advocate to get the care you need, Iowa Advocates, they'll do that too. They'll handle your Medicare and Medicaid applications, and that's just the beginning. They do a lot more too. Give Debbie and her team at Iowa Advocates a call right now. Online, iwilladvocates.com. Never worry about your healthcare ever again. Let Iowa Advocates handle everything for you. Steve Kane radio listeners love Champagne Automotive Repair in Boca.
I went over to a Champagne Automotive, and I gotta say that this man is the most fair mechanic I have dealt with in my entire life. We took a car over there that, that was not being used yet, you know, it belonged to my 90-year-old dad. Everybody I'd taken it to before.
Hey, everybody in the chat, make sure that you like the video. That helps so much with the YouTube algorithm to recommend this video to more and more people. Liking is so important, so please like the video, and if you're watching on a, on a mobile device, close out the chat, you'll see the like button. If you're watching on TV, go to your computer or take out your phone or, or tablet or iPad and like, like it there. That helps so much, guys.
And their prices are low. Champagne Automotive Repair in Boca. Give them a call, 561-245-8101, 561-245-8101. Did you know that two out of five Americans suffer from some kind of allergy? So it's likely that fatigue, runny nose, headaches, intestinal problems, and a general lousy feeling can be connected to an allergy. Any Lab Test Now of Coral Springs offer allergy testing that can detect over 125 airborne, food and environmental allergens. Allergy testing is quick, easy, and it's painless. Results can be shared with your physician or an allergist. No appointment needed, no doctor's order or prescription either. Just stop right in. Any Lab Test Now of Coral Springs is located at 955 North University Drive, that's on the southeast corner of University and Ramblewood, near the Coral Square Mall, or give them a call. 954-. Just search for WWF.
All right, and you know, um, allergies, and this is good at Any Lab Test Now of Boca and Coral Springs. There's lots of Any Lab Test Nows. Those are the only two locations advertising on the Steve Kane Radio Show, so support those two locations. My allergies have been really bad this year. My daughter's allergies too, and what, um, what a doctor told us, uh, because my, my daughter's complained about, she talked to her doctor about this, um, a doctor told us because of the lockdowns and people not traveling around and stuff, that we haven't been exposed to allergens too much, so allergies are worse this year. Go over to Any Lab Test Now of Boca, Coral Springs. Their allergy testing's just a simple blood draw, not that 80 to 100, uh, sticks to your back and arms and everything that's, that's medieval torture. One blood draw, environmental and food allergies, you get it all, and you know what you are allergic to. I have a lot of allergies, food allergies in particular, and it lets me know what to avoid, so I don't have these problems. All right, back to the phones we go. Every line is lit. Good morning, you're on the radio. Good morning, caller. All right, once, twice. Good morning, you're on the radio.
Yes, good, good morning, Brian.
Yeah, what's your name?
Uh, it's David from New York.
Hey, hey, David.
Yeah, okay, the last caller hit it right on the nose. What critical race theory is? It's simply anti-white. It's all over. It's in companies, it's in the government, it's in the schools. Look at this government, it's anti-white. They have programs where experts should apply except white people. It's an anti-white program, that's what it is.
And it's brought to you by the Democrats. You know, when you look at, when you look at the racial divisions in this country, now it's anti-white, it used to be anti-black and other groups, it was always the Democrats doing it, always. The Democrats did everything. always the Democrats doing it. Always. The Democrats did everything. The Democrats, you know, the Democrats excluded blacks from the New Deal. Now they're excluding whites, you know? I mean, they're, you know, the Democrats are behind all of this stuff. Every race problem in America, it's not the fault of this country, it's the fault of this Democrat Party. You know, when the Civil War was over, when the Civil War was over, they should have banned the damn Democrat Party for that insurrection they led known as the Civil War.
That's right. You're right. David, you're right. And you know what the solution-
No, not David. I'm Brian. I don't know who David is. That's somebody else.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The, the solution is that every single gover-, uh, governor, like DeSantis, is what they're doing even in Texas and some of the rest states, is that they have to ban this program from every single public out, outlets and companies. They have to ban it. That's the solution. All these parents that are going to the cho-, school board, their, their, their voices are heard, but they're-
Well, when you, you know, in that audio I played, which I will play later in the show, again, for people that might just be tuning in and taking their kids to school later on, you know, you can hear the panic in the school board members trying to shut her down. What these people hate, they're, they're like cockroaches. The light comes on and they scatter. They don't like people knowing what they're doing in the schools. They don't like it.
Yeah, you're, you're right. But the thing, the, the, for people, they don't give, they don't give a damn, that's what you're saying. They're practically it. But these, uh, uh, a big town needs a lot of voice, a lot of public-
Yeah.
-needs to have to do it. Teachers yelling, yeah, like, eh.
Yeah, listen, your, your cell's cutting out, so I gotta let you go, but thanks for the call. Good morning, you're on the radio.
Hey, good morning, Brian. How are you?
I'm all right. What's your name?
Ari from New Jersey.
Hey, New Jersey. What's up?
Um, so I know that we, parents always ask, um, what is going on in school? And they should know, especially 2020, when the, when we had the rumors-
Well, the kids will never tell you. The kids will never tell you, oh, you know, not my, nothing, you know, they'll never tell you. You gotta get, you gotta get, asking the kids, don't do it, doesn't cut it.
But I told the truth to my mom. And I was like, I told her what happened today, whether it was bad or good, they didn't know, especially now. We had critical race theory, especially, did you see the, um, the black guy, um, with her, her daughter?
With his daughter? Yeah, from TikTok? Yeah, I saw that guy, yeah.
You should play it because that guy is gonna be in next MAGA.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You know, the, the thing is, one of the reasons the left, these radical liberals get their way is they're, because they control the media, they're able to, they're able to push this, um, narrative that they represent the majority of the people. They're a minority, uh, when it comes to the opinions on most of these issues. MAGA conservatism is what the majority of Americans believe.
For sure, for sure. And we need people strong like this woman that came out.
Oh, she's not going anywhere. She's not going anywhere. And, and she needs to look beyond that school board. I, I, I'm telling you, she needs, President Trump needs to bring her to his rallies.
For sure. I agree. I agree with-
All right, take care. Appreciate the call. Good morning, you're on the radio.
Yeah, good morning, Brian.
Yeah, Richie.
Yeah, you know, I'm listening to this and, and you, you know, you're right with the schools. But then you got a President of the United States saying, I mean, with all the problems in the world right now, China and everything else, the biggest, biggest country are white people.
Well, and climate change. And climate change.
I mean, this is, this is, I mean-
Then why, then why doesn't he resign and let the minority vice president take over with their cookies? You know, you know what I learned? I learned something about Kamala Harris yesterday. This really surprised me. Do you know how tall she is?
I don't know. I don't know.
Five-two. She's five-two. That's pretty short. You know, some reports say five-three, but I imagine they round up. She's five-two. I thought she was like five-ten or something like this. Five-nine, five-ten? I didn't realize she was only five-two. We've never had a president in the modern era under five-eleven, by the way.
This is, this is a total attack on every, at everything that we stand for in the nation. The border, everything. It's just, it's outrageous. I mean, and, and they're running this thing. And like you said, you, you watch the news, you got like CNN asking, asking the press secretary the question, but what are we getting wrong? You know, we're doing it anymore. I mean, they, this is really, I, I don't even know. I feel like I'm, I'm waking up in a, in a dream and it's just, we're not in shape anymore.
Mm-hmm.
We're breaking out, you get some kind of, sort of show. But all those people, all those folks that if they bump into that, touch their life, you think that they would, if they had the choice to see what's going on in our country today, they would choose to play. I, I'm starting to doubt it.
Yeah. No, this is a, this is a good thing that's going on here. This critical race theory is a great thing because it's waking up parents, millions of parents. And when you get one parent woken up, that's actually two because, believe me, her husband agrees with her on it, this woman I play. We've got millions of parents that are waking up and will be MAGA as we go into the, into the midterms.
If I bring up something that's in the race today, when I watched what woke up last week, I saw yesterday, Chicago, where they were twerking on a police car and they went to the top of the-
Well, you know, that twerking on the police, I saw that. And that's, when I went to South Beach in Miami last year, that's what was going on. And, uh, twerking is simulated sex. Um, and I, you know, and, uh, it's disgusting. It's pornographic and it's, it's uncivilized. And I don't know how this crap started, but that police car that had, uh, the twerkers on top of it in Chicago, did they arrest any of those, uh, people? Uh, that's, it was just, it's, those poor cops. How do, how do you police Chicago?
Yeah, it's, it's, the crowd that gathered around mocked the police also. This is a movement that's going on and this is the anti-American. I mean, this, this, the whole thing. I mean, I, I, I don't even know where to begin because you could spend the whole day talking about what they're doing in here in the country, especially in the country down.
I thought it was strange, I thought it was strange that the, the police, it looked like a police SUV. I, I couldn't quite tell with all, there were so many twerkers on it, it was hard to tell what kind of vehicle it was, but it didn't stop. They kept driving.
Yeah, it looked like a parade. If I was a black person, if I could be sure that I was really being oppressed, I'm sure that most black people are oppressed.
And that, that, that look, that could have, if it wasn't Chicago on the police car, I would have thought that was Miami Beach. South Beach has turned into that. And it's, um, it's, it's, I mean, I, I went, you know, I went to South Beach about a year ago during the pandemic and it was, uh, I was shocked. It was just like that video of the police car, um, in Chicago that we're seeing yesterday. This twerking thing is disgusting. We used to get, you know, the, the hanging of the pants down by the knees was bad enough, but this is just, it's, it's, it's a simulated sex act.
They were right in this, the, the behinds were in the officer's face.
I don't, that's why I don't, that's why I was surprised the car was still driving because how could they see?
Incredible. I think that's what they-
And you know what? If they would have gotten out and arrested those girls on the car, there would have been a riot.
Exactly. So everything is back, I, I, you know, I, I, everything is so backwards and if those straightens out, we're, that's right. This Candace Owens, remember there were major attacks? This is no joke. This is a purposeful thing.
Yeah, you'll never see Candace Owens twerking. You know, I, I, I don't know if I'm the only guy that thinks this, but I, I think that twerking is disgusting. I, I think it's repulsive. I don't think it's cool. I don't think it's hot. I don't think it's sexy. I think it's gross. I mean, what's like, to me, it's like watching somebody sit on the toilet.
Yeah, they're learning this from their phones. And they're learning this from all this other crap. They, they banned the President of the United States from Facebook, but yet they put this on Facebook.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. All right, take care. Listen, if you're on hold standby, um, we're gonna, we're gonna take our break and be right back. Don't go anywhere.
1470, FM 95.3, 96.9, South Florida's FM Money Talk Radio Network, help you WNN, Pompano Beach.
Stop paying an outrageous fortune for your tires. Go easy on your budget and buy your tires at Friendly Tire and Margate, where they have all the major brands like Goodyear and Firestone at discount prices that absolutely can't be beat. Steve Kane's tires, Cory's Toyota van, at the other shops, $175 a tire. At Friendly Tire, just $75 a tire. That's a $100 savings per tire. Tires for my daughter Emily's car, $135 at the shops around town. The price at Friendly Tire, only $65. That's a $70 savings per tire. These prices are out the door and on the road. Free mounting and balancing and no added charges. Friendly Tire have a great selection of good-use tires too, starting at just $30 for most cars. Call my good buddy Friendly Mike at Friendly Tire. Tell him what you drive and he will give you a great low price right over the phone. 954-977-9445. 954-977-9445. Online, friendlytire.net.
Hello, I'm Mike Windell, Adventure My Pillow, here to tell you about my Giza Dream Bed Sheets.
You have sound bites from that big piece?
No, no, just, I just, I don't have them now. I'm just gonna play the whole thing.
Because now would be a good time to play a, a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have the clips I had yesterday, today. I didn't bring them.
They come with extra wide pillowcases to fit over any pillow and extra deep pockets to fit over any mattress. Not only that, they come with my 60-day money-back guarantee and a 10-year warranty. And now you can get the best sheets ever for the best price ever. When you buy one of my Giza Dream Bed Sheet Sets, you'll get another one absolutely free. I personally guarantee that they'll be the most comfortable sheets you'll ever own.
Use the promo COCAIN at checkout and when you buy a set of Giza Dream Sheets, get a second set free. But you've gotta use the promo-
Um, because I acci-, uh, you couldn't hear Richie because I accidentally hit another button.
The Steve Kane 2022 MAGA Cruise is a go. Leaving January 20-
Nothing's wrong with being short. I just was surprised that Kamala Harris is only five-two. Am I the, did you guys think she was taller?
Or nine nights cruising the Caribbean. We will stop in Grand Cayman Island, Bonner, Curacao, and Aruba. Reserve your cabin right now and call Ian from Cruise and Travel Depot. 561-244-5779.
The Steve Kane Show is brought to you by attorney Barry Siegel at the Siegel Law Group. Are you concerned with the distribution of your assets to the-
Yeah, I figured she was like five-eight to five-ten. Five-two. Like I say, some reports say five-three, but you know, that's rounded up. She's five-two. Mostly five-two. Yeah. They must have like midget secret service around her.
The Steve Kane Show. To call the show toll-free, dial 1-888-GO-KANE-1. That's 1-888-GO-KANE-1. And now here's Steve Kane.
All right, hour number two has begun. One opening on the board now. Uh, big announcement came out. You know, Royal Caribbean, you know, our, our listener cruises are on Celebrity Cruise Line, which is a luxury cruise line, very beautiful luxury cruise line, but it is owned by Royal Caribbean. So Royal Caribbean announced no vaccinations needed for cruising. That means you do not need the vaccination to join Steve Kane and me on our cruise to Aruba, the Cayman Islands, Bonner, and Curacao in January. So call Ian at Cruise and Travel Depot, join us. Some more people booked yesterday after I made this announcement in the listening audience. This is our biggest group yet. Uh, Ian at Cruise and Travel Depot, uh, his number listed at stevekane show dot com. 561-244-5779. 561-244-5779. There's only one opening on the board. I'm Brian Craig. You're listening to the Steve Kane Show, Florida's longest running radio show. Um, I'm gonna play the audio later in the show that I started with. Um, but just let me recap, then I'll go to the phones and later we'll play the audio again. But, um, I was inspired to do this by Greg Kelly on Newsmax TV. Um, the Tadiana Abraham, this woman in New York who confronted her school board over critical race theory is just boom, gone viral. Millions have seen it. It's a huge story. That's what the conversation, uh, so far this morning is about. Good morning, you're on the radio. What's your name?
Brian, Robert Pence of Kentucky.
Yeah, Kentucky.
Man, that lady is amazing. She is, you're right, she needs to run for Congress. But she absolutely needs to be at every Trump rally that, that he has.
Oh, yeah.
She opened the floodgates, man. You know, everybody and their, and their brother and sister are gonna be checking into this now.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know. She'd be great with Trump. Trump, and I know, I know Trump's seen the video because he knows everything that's going on.
Do, do you remember, I told you before, I said the next, the, the next election, there'll be 100 million people voting?
Well, you know, sometimes, you know, there's that, you miss me yet, you know, you know, phrase you hear with MAGA people, you know, sometimes, you know, people, we got so, we, you know, we had his, like a utopia, even during COVID, under President Trump. He was doing such a great job. And it hasn't taken us long to get back. This is, what, what we're suffering through now is what it was like with Bush one, Bush two, Clinton, Obama. Things always suck like this. President Trump is a superhero, uh, when it comes to presidents. And, uh, man, it, the country, country's going to hell right now.
I'm telling you, yeah, it's, uh, but-
All right, Kentucky. Appreciate the call. Good morning, you're on the radio.
Hey, it's Mike and welcome.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, so if I, so if I go back to school, I could wa-, I could, uh, watch twerking, I eat my cookies, and half the teachers tell me that white people are bad and indigenous people are good.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
That has told me so much. I cannot, I, I, I am flabbergasted.
Yeah.
So, I would hear about the cops is doing this. And I even, in the background, I was a Democrat. I was like, man, that's crazy. Why would people want to tell people this stuff? But now, like in the last, uh, 12, 14 years, started with Common Core, and now we've got this, and then we've got teachers saying it's okay, um, or by the dictionary.
Okay, Common Core is, Common Core is traditional, good old-fashioned American values compared to this. I mean, let me ask you this, man to man, am I the only guy that finds twerking repulsive?
That was disgusting. I, I never, you know, I never liked it. And, um, it's just, I don't, I don't get, you know, uh, it's just over the top. I, I saw that with the police officers and, uh, I don't want them to stop because they, they would have torched their car. They would have ruined it.
Yeah, but how could they drive the car when you got these, uh, girls twerking on the hood in front of the windshield?
I didn't watch it enough to look. Maybe one guy was telling the other guy, hey, go straight, right? I don't know. But, uh, I, I just, okay, that's harsh to think about the cops. I don't, I did not catch one county, but there, you know, there's counties all over the place, uh, other things as well, that are having problems keeping, retaining the police force. So this one county put a vote to them, saying that we are no longer escorting funeral.
Yeah, they don't have, I saw that story. I can't remember where that was either. I read that over the weekend. There's a, there's a police department that no longer will be escorting funerals because they don't have enough manpower to do it.
Well, that's-
Yeah. Isn't that something? Yeah. So good luck with your funerals with the red lights.
We are blessed that, we are so blessed that I would run and dance. He came out a week ago. He, he basically outlawed it. I mean, he's no longer the teacher's party in, in, in public school and kids, the kids. So, I mean, uh, it's-
Yeah, no doubt.
Woman comes out of the, you know, and there's, there's women, there's kids all over. You just told everybody that. There's, there's, there's a coalition in Detroit of black women, and they're going around, they're saying, cut this crap out. There's a coalition of Asian women in California. There's different little pockets. You're gonna hear one more about them over the summer. I better hear about this. Shucks.
Yeah.
This is real news. And Kamala come down yesterday, I heard we talked about this, and she's in Guatemala or whatever, and she says, uh, by the way, don't come here. You know who told me to say that? Because he said the same thing, but he said it's-
Yeah, we'll, we'll get into that in a little bit. Hey, Mike, appreciate the, appreciate the call. Good morning, you're on the radio.
Good morning, Congressman.
Yeah, Doug.
I gotta show you that I'm not always negative. You know, first of all, what about Ron DeSantis, that great governor? He says, no critical race theory in schools anymore. No boys are gonna be able to play on, on girls' teams. Uh, and now this woman, fantastic from New York.
Well, I, you know, let, no, no, no. So this thing with DeSantis, and I could be wrong about this. What he's, he doesn't have power over the local schools. Okay? That's at the county level. What he is saying is if your school does these things, critical race theory, the transgendered athletes, you're not gonna get money from the state for the school. So, um, I support Ron DeSantis, don't misunderstand me, but that has not yet been challenged. So if, you know, so I gotta, I'm waiting for the challenge to happen. And as soon as it's challenged, they're gonna go to court. And this, this could very well end up in front of the Supreme Court. Just because he said it, uh, doesn't mean that they've thrown out the critical race theory lesson plans and everything. It's probably still going on. Uh, it has to be exposed and challenged.
Well, I, well, I, I was getting that he was saying that you can't do it then.
He said if you do it, you won't get, you won't get the state funds is what he's saying. Because the school, the school, and that's, by the way, it's a lot of money. Uh, I don't know what percentage. One thing school boards love is their money. Uh, I don't know what percentage of the budget for the local school districts comes from the state as opposed to the county itself through property taxes. I do not know. Um, but, uh, that's, um, I mean, we got, it hasn't been challenged yet.
Oh, all the schools are always trying to have not enough money. So if any money you're taking, that could be a serious problem for them. So I guess they'll probably have to-
I don't know, man. My county's got plenty of money. We got more dog parks than dogs. There's a dog park every mile in my, where I live, you know?
They spend money, but for some reason, then I'll get to the schools, the, the teachers don't get paid very well. And they're always trying-
Teachers are paid extremely well. Teachers are, are paid extremely well. Um, if you, if you look at the actual hours that they work, they have the whole summer off. They don't, they work like eight, nine months a year. They have two weeks off at Christmas. They got, uh, every weekend off, every holiday off. You know, if you, if you put together their, the hours that they work, that most, most teachers would be making like, like 70, 80,000 a year. Teachers are paid very, very well for the amount of time they work.
They, they, you know, they all over here know what they pay. National County pays the teachers like over 100,000 a year. So they're all jealous of, I mean, in New York. And they think they're underpaid. And you're right, yeah, they hardly ever work.
Listen, everybody, every, you know, it's what Chris Christie told that one teacher one- Listen, everybody, you know, it's what Chris Christie told that one teacher one time when he was governor who was complaining about salaries, says, hey, you know what teachers were paid when you went to college? You know, I, I have a college degree. I went to college planning on maybe teaching one day and I don't because this pays more money. And I got a family. I make a lot more money doing this than teaching, okay? And you know, summers off and everything, maybe when I retire, you know, I'll become a teacher because that's kind of like retirement. But yeah, give me a break.
All of a sudden you become a professor and then you start making big money.
Oh, yeah, teaching, working three days a week professors, college professors.
Yeah, and like 10 days and they can't get fired, unbelievable.
Professor, college professors, this is, this is true. This is not a joke. College professors have one of the longest life expectancies of any group out there in the workforce that's college educated because it's a stress-free job. There's no accountability. They work about three days, they're three days a week. They got like three classes a week, you know, which isn't even full-day work. Yeah, yeah. All right, take care, Doug. Good morning, you're on the radio. What's your name?
Hi, my name is Steve. I'm originally from Philadelphia. I have called in a few times.
Okay, what's up?
I have to tell you, I listened to that audio portion of that woman speaking to the school board in New York. And I confess, I liked it so much that I missed part of your show because I loved her on YouTube and I listen to it again. This woman is awesome and I won't be surprised if we hear from her again.
Well, I saw, she was a guest on Greg Kelly last night. He played the thing and then he had her on, you know, from her, from her home. I mean, can you see her on the road? Could you imagine a Trump rally? It's President Trump with Marjorie Taylor Greene, Matt Gaetz, and Tatiana Abraham here from the school board. That would be amazing.
Oh, yes, it would. And you know what? I usually watch Greg Kelly, but I missed him last night.
Oh, he was very, he was, one of his best shows was last night Greg Kelly. He was on fire.
Well, I, I had a tape, so I will watch it. I have it on my VCR, but, but I'm glad you played it this morning because you, look, I've become aware to a lot of things that are going on just by listening to your show every morning. Because you know, it's impossible to watch all these news programs at night.
Yeah.
So, you know, I've become aware of a lot of these things and, but that was like the best, that was like the best segment that you've had. I mean, that was awesome.
No, I appreciate it.
Where?
Well, thank you. All right, well, listen, I got to run. Take care. We'll take our break, come back. There's much more to talk about. I will play that audio in its entirety again. Don't worry for people that are just tuning in. So that's coming up. I'm Brian, you're listening to the Steve Kane Radio Show, Florida's longest-running radio show on the radio since 1977. We'll be right back.
Here's the hot weather. It's in the mid-'90s in the middle of the day and that's what the actual temperature is. The heat index, much higher than that. That means your air conditioner is going to work harder and harder driving up your electric bill. And on the line, we have Scott from Cut My Kilowatts, who's going to save you big, big money on your electric bill. Tell them how you're going to do it, Scott.
Hey, Brian, well, you know, we do it with the radiant barrier installation and making sure that none of your air conditioning ducts are leaking into your attic. But I have Rebecca on the line with me, who's a longtime Steve Kane listener, and we had the pleasure of going up and doing a whole attic package for her at her house on Wednesday of this week. And we put all new ducts in for radiant barrier and all new insulation. And she just wants to tell you how our experience was.
Good morning. I wanted to let you know that this morning, first of all, the people that came out, his crew were very, very polite and they did the work, it's a very difficult job to go up in an attic, pull out all the old ducts, come in and put in all new ducts. It's extra additional ducts to make my system work better. I'm in the construction industry, I'm an architect, so I'm familiar with what the cost should be and how much time it takes.
Now, make sure that you are subscribed, everyone. Subscribe. If you're already subscribed, check and make sure you are. And you got the notification bell clicked too. And if you could like the video, that'd be amazing. Please like the video.
On my ceiling and they put in flex stuff, which is, you know, what we use now in the industry. But let me tell you, what I paid for the entire package should have cost just to remove the old ductwork and install new ductwork. And I got everything for less than what I thought.
Well, that's amazing. And when Scott from Cut My Kilowatts brings that radiant barrier into your attic, it pays for itself because what it does, it cools off your ceiling, cools off your attic, keeps that hot floor to heat that's well over 100 degrees in your attic off of your air conditioning ducts, which means your air conditioner works less to keep your house cool and comfortable for you, which means you have lower electrical bills. It works. Listen, guys, give Scott at Cut My Kilowatts a call. His number's listed at stevekane.com, as is his website if you miss it. His number, which rings directly to him, 954-939-1500. 954-939-1500. That's Scott from Cut My Kilowatts.
Listen to the Steve Kane Show on iHeartRadio. Just search for W...
Welcome back, 19 minutes after the hour. I'm Brian Craig. This is Florida's longest-running radio show, the Steve Kane Show, on the radio since 1977. Now, let me tell you, Mike Lindell at MyPillow needs you. You know, his law firm dropped him that he was doing these lawsuits with? His law firm dropped him. Yeah, yeah. And you know, Mike Lindell, the inventor of the MyPillow, he is laying everything on the line, whether it's frank speech or these lawsuits. He's, he's doing everything he can to fight for Trump, fight for MAGA, and he is putting it all out there on the line. And when you purchase products from MyPillow, you're supporting Mike Lindell and all of his efforts, as well as the Steve Kane Radio Show. And you know, the discounts are up to 66% off at mypillow.com. There is something there for everyone. You know, this mattress topper, which I have, this is an amazing thing, 30% off the MyPillow mattress topper with the promo code KANE, and you get two free MyPillows with it. If you go to stevekane.com, I have a video right at the top of my wife and I unboxing our mattress topper, making our bed with it. And it comes in all sizes from twin all the way up to California king. And it's again, 30% off with the promo code KANE at checkout, K-A-N-E. And let me just read you a couple of things about this mattress topper. It has a zippered removable cover, which is washable and dryable. That's amazing, the mattress topper. The four-corner straps hold it to your topper in place. There's no wires, no moving parts, no remote. It comes with a 10-year warranty, a 60-day money-back guarantee, and it's made right here in the USA. So go to mypillow.com, order yourself that mattress topper. I've had it now for a couple of months and goodness, it is comfortable. So comfortable. I mean, I just, it's paradise when I lay down on my bed with this mattress topper. And I, you know, I, I just, I can't believe how comfortable it is from the first night. It's just wonderful. 30% off with the promo code KANE at checkout, K-A-N-E. Makes a great gift for Father's Day, by the way. Every dad would love the MyPillow mattress topper. All right, so after the next break, I'm going to play in its entirety Tatiana Abraham at her school board meeting in New York. I'm going to do it at the, after the bottom of the hour break for two reasons. People that are just tuning in, that are in the car taking their kids to school need to hear this as they take their children to school. And after 7:30 is when most parents are in the car, listening on their radios to this program when they're on the way to school. So I did play it at the top of the show at 6:00. I'm going to play it again at the bottom of the hour because I want parents in the cars driving their kids to school to hear it, okay? It's important. It's important. And it's pretty scary stuff. But I want to, I want to bring up a couple of other things too, that I don't want to be lost as we go through this. Jim Acosta was on with Blitzer yesterday on CNN and I'm going to play a clip, but they have made a decision. They are not going to carry any Trump. They didn't say this. I'm telling you, Trump rallies and events, the plan is now for the mainstream media to never carry them ever again. And I'm going to play this clip. Jim Acosta went on forever. This clip, I can't stand Jim Acosta. It's only 19 seconds long, okay? And I know it's tough. It may be the longest 19 seconds in radio, but I want, I want you to hear this. Jim Acosta with Blitzer.
As long as he remains out on the road and remains in a position where he can spread these big lies, I think there's the potential for more political violence in this country. And it just goes against, as you know, well, everything that this country stands for. We pride ourselves on not having this kind of political violence in this country. As long as Trump remains on the stage, it remains a strong possibility.
Okay, so that's what they're going to hide behind. They're going to, they're not going to air it because he is inciting violence. Have they produced any evidence that he had a damn thing to do with that Capitol breach? Let me tell you something. Let me tell you this. If President Trump had anything to do with the organization and planning of the Capitol breach, the guy that went in wouldn't have been dressed up like a damn Viking or the grand poobah from the Elks Lodge or whatever the hell the, the guy with the headdress was doing with his shirt off, looking like a lunatic, okay? Trump would have a decent-looking guy. There is evidence that Trump had nothing to do with it. You produce some evidence that Trump had prior knowledge even. They've done none of that. They, they keep promoting that fake news lie, but they're using that as a way to keep him from being on television with his rallies. That's okay. We've got Newsmax TV, man. We got One American News, we got Right Side Broadcasting, they all carry it live. So Jim Acosta, continue to make yourself irrelevant and you creeps at Fox News, do the same thing. Make yourself irrelevant. We'll go to Newsmax, we'll go to One American News, we'll go to Right Side Broadcasting, and we'll watch it. And you're going to introduce the world to these people because these places that carry it are going to be trending on Twitter. And CNN, you're going to be talking to no one. All right? But that, they're not going to air any of them. Telling you, not going to air any of them. And, and, and I think the reason that President Trump, people are like, why isn't he announcing where they're going to be? Because he doesn't want to give these evil people opportunity to mobilize because you're going to find out about the rallies not long before. Not long before. Time, locations. Because once they announce a location, Jim Acosta and his creep types are going to go out there and try to stop it. And this is their whole thing. Let me, let me play, this is Liz Cheney, daughter of a war criminal. Liz Cheney is talking about Republicans that go to, go to meet with President Trump since the Capitol breach.
What Donald Trump did is the most dangerous thing, the most egregious violation of an oath of office of any president in our history. And so the idea that a few weeks after he did that, the leader, the Republicans in the House would be at Mar-a-Lago, essentially, you know, pleading with them to somehow, you know, come back into the fold, or whatever it was he was doing, to me was inexcusable.
Okay, now that's Liz Cheney. You know, how many people are dead because of her father's lie? You know, she's a rich woman. All that Halliburton money of her daddy's? She's a wealthy woman from the blood of people who were sacrificed because her dad's a liar about the weapons of mass destruction. And you know what? I didn't know that he was a liar. I didn't know George W. Bush was a lowlife. I believed them and I supported the war in Iraq and I was wrong. And I know a lot of you did too. How many people are dead, not just Americans and our coalition allies, but in the Middle East because of her dad? How many, how many times have you seen a guy on these wounded warrior commercials on TV? He's a young guy, he's got young kids, a pretty wife, and he's melted because he was in some IED fire because of her dad? How dare she pass moral judgment on President Trump? And, and I'm not going to play Obama. I was going to, but I, I left those sound bites at home because Acosta, Liz Cheney is enough. I don't need, I don't want to play, I don't want to pollute the airwaves with Obama. But Obama was talking about the dangers of Trump too. See, this is the new narrative. He's dangerous. Political violence. He's going to inspire political violence. You can't let him speak. They're coordinating Obama, Liz Cheney, Jim Acosta. There's coordination here, people. And it's quite obvious. You're on the radio. What's your name?
Louise from Boca.
Hey, Louise, what's up?
No, I don't know if you're aware, I don't have Newsmax or anything like that. But did you know C-SPAN covered his speech?
Yes, they did cover it. Yeah, C-SPAN had it. Yeah, 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 they carried it too. But they may stop C-SPAN. C-SPAN's pretty, you know, C-SPAN are decent people. They had me on back in April, but they're lefties over there. So they may, they may put the screws to C-SPAN.
Oh, because I watched it on C-SPAN, so I'm hoping it'll continue. I don't know, as you said.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Well, you got to get on YouTube because Right Side Broadcasting on YouTube carries every Trump event.
Yeah, see, I don't have that.
Well, it's, it's available to you, so you got to get together with your kids or your grandkids and get it.
Well, that's a possibility. Okay.
All right, take care. Good morning, you're on the radio. Good morning. Good morning. What's your name?
It's Andrea.
Oh, hey, Andrea, what's up?
Well, first of all, I love this woman. I love this woman. This was the pushback I was talking about. And what I really, really love about her is when they tried to shut her down, she just got louder. And that's what needs to happen on every single level in this society with this leftist indoctrination and the lunacy. People need to push back and not be afraid to be labeled racist or homophobic or transphobic. We now have to be, and we're starting to be, way louder than...
See, you know, they talk about woke. You know who's woke? MAGA's woke. We're woke. They're not woke, we're woke.
Look at what happened with the Texas runoff. Three Democratic counties voted Republican for the first time. Happening. And you know why? Jim Acosta should be afraid. Obama should be afraid. Liz Cheney should be afraid.
Well, they're losing their power. They're losing their power and, and you know, I'm ashamed that I supported her father. They're war criminals. The liberals were right about that. Maybe broken clock, you know, but they were right. You know, and she's out, how dare she cast moral judgment on the great Donald Trump? And she's the one that wants to keep the troops in Afghanistan. Easy for her to say, you know?
I think that before any president is able to send other people's children off to war, I think their children...
Nah, I don't think so. This isn't The Hunger Games, okay? This isn't The Hunger Games. No, that's ridiculous. But hey, listen, I got to run for a break, Audrey, but thanks for the call. Okay, we're going to take our break for the bottom of the hour. When we get back, I'm going to play in its entirety again. Played at the top of the show, I'm going to play it again in its entirety, this incredible woman who confronted her school board over critical race theory in New York. And, and I'm playing it again after this break. For those of you who are parents that are either driving your kids to school or have just dropped them off, parents, you need to keep your radios locked in. You don't want to miss this. It's about, you'll be awakened. You'll be woke too. My name's Brian Craig. This is the Steve Kane Radio Show, Florida's longest-running radio show. We'll be right back.
Stop paying an outrageous fortune for your tires.
Go easy on your budget and buy your tires at Friendly Tire in Margate, where they have all the major brands like Goodyear and Firestone at discount prices that absolutely can't be beat. Steve Kane's tires for his Toyota van. At the other shops, $175 a tire. At Friendly Tire, just $75 a tire. That's a $100 savings per tire. Tires for my daughter Emily's car, $135 at the shops around town. The price at Friendly Tire, only $65. That's a $70 savings per tire. These prices are out the door and on the road. Free mounting and balancing, and no added charges. Friendly Tire have a great selection of good-use tires, too, starting at just $30 for most cars. Call my good buddy Friendly Mike at Friendly Tire. Tell him we you drive, and he will give you a great little price right over the phone. Online, friendlytire.net.
If you suffer with diabetes, there's a 25% chance that you'll develop a foot ulcer that can lead to severe health consequences, including amputation. At the Soul Authority, at little or no cost, you can receive your very own...
Steve Kane Show. Hey Barry, hold on.
Medicaid recipients are entitled to one pair of quality diabetic shoes and three custom inserts. Call the Soul Authority today.
All right, Father's Day is coming up in just a couple weeks. Less than two weeks away from Father's Day. And you fathers out there, you know, you can give your family a Father's Day gift, and that's by calling Attorney Barry Siegel and having him review your estate plan, so that you don't leave your kids and grandkids, well, with probate and other problems after your passing. Attorney Barry Siegel, good morning, Attorney Barry Siegel.
Good morning, how are you, Brian?
Doing all right. What do you have for us today, Barry?
Well, Brian, as an elder law attorney, what we do is we help people in their retirement years protect their assets from the biggest threat they have to their assets. That's the cost of long-term care, paying for care, home, paying for care in a facility, like an assisted living facility or nursing home. All of those things could be very, very expensive, and there's very limited ways to pay for them. You can use long-term care insurance, but you have to have it, and most people don't because it's very expensive, and it could be too difficult to get by at this point. Paying out of pocket is what we're looking to avoid. We don't want to spend down our assets and go broke. So there is Medicaid. Medicaid is a government program that can help pay for those costs. Here's the big problem. The big problem is, most people decide, without digging into it, that they can't get it. They decide that they have too much in assets, they have too much in income, so they won't qualify, and they don't bother to come in and see us, for example, to check to see if they could actually get it. Because what an elder law attorney does, what we do in our offices, we help people with too much income or too much assets above to become eligible. And what we're also seeing a lot of, Brian, is we're getting people coming in from other states, let's just say like New York, and New Jersey, and Massachusetts, and the Northeast, who know about Medicaid, but the rules are different in different states. So you need to come in and learn how it could apply to you and your family, and help protect your assets, so you don't run out of money before you run out of life.
Yeah, that's right. And that, "Don't run out of money" to you, you know, before you run out of life, is a big problem that a lot of people run into. And these are things that can be avoided. Now, now, listen, give Attorney Barry Siegel a call. There's no excuse, because it's a free consultation with Attorney Barry Siegel, if you mention you heard about him on the Steve Kane Show. His website, siegellawgroup.com, and his number is toll-free, 855-FLA-3782. Attorney Barry Siegel, we will talk later in the week.
All right.
All right. Take care, take care. All right, now, let me introduce what I'm about to do here, because I'm going to replay this audio, which I think everybody needs to hear. This is in particular for parents with kids in school today. Okay? I saw this, I was going to play a clip or two of this on yesterday's program, and I didn't, because around this time yesterday is when I got that, that great call from the guy who was divorced with the kids about the vaccinations and all. And I didn't get to it. And the show went off in a different direction, but you know what? I'm glad that happened, because I only had a couple clips of this woman's confrontation with her school board. And they were, they're good clips, and I was going to play them and talk about it. And then last night, I watched Greg Kelly, and he said that he was going to do something they never do, which is what I've been doing, something we never do. He said, "Usually, we play sound bites and talk about..." He says, "We're going to play the whole exchange, and I'm going to do it again." Because the whole exchange is brilliant, and you really need to hear it in its entirety. It's about 10 or 11 minutes long, but it goes by quick. This woman, her name is Tatiana Abraham. She has kids in a local school district in New York, and she's outraged over racist critical race theory being taught to her kid. So she went to the school board meeting and confronted the school board over this. Millions and millions of people have seen this video. It has gone viral. I'm going to play it now in its entirety, and then we'll get back to the calls.
Good evening. My name is Tatiana Abraham, and I'm here for the first time. I'm here tonight not only as a community member, but as a parent in this district. Recently, you sent out a survey wanting to know why parents were not voting yes for this budget. So my situation, my vote for no is a little different. I think the Board of Education and those sitting on the panels are thieves. I think they're liars and have committed treason against our children. My message to this district and the members of the Board of Ed, stop indoctrinating our children. Stop teaching our children to hate the police. Stop teaching our children that if they don't agree with the LGBT community, that they're homophobic. You have no idea each child's life. You don't know what their family lifestyle consists of. You don't know the makeup of their, of their life. You have children like mine, who is Muslim, and I'm Christian, and everyone would think, they would never believe that of her, right? Because the way she looks, or according to Ms. Cyrus, she's too pasty-white. Ma'am, ma'am.
See, the school board member trying to shut her up.
Over here.
See, now the school board, this is a school board meeting leader, is trying to shut her up, doesn't want her to talk, but they're not going to have any luck with this.
Not allowed to use names. If you have something you'd like to discuss about a specific person, you can call the superintendent or leave your info for her to call you tomorrow. Why are we not allowed to discuss names? Why am I not allowed, when they purposely themselves expose themselves on social media, talking about calling for the death of a former president? Or saying that any child that doesn't believe in Black Lives Matter should be canceled out? Is this what my tax dollars is paying for? You're teaching my children and other children that if they believe in God Almighty, they're part of a cult. These educators put their own names out there. We have Mr. Barry, who took it upon himself with Ms. Cyrus to create a curriculum.
Another school board member. He said, "That should be it."
Created a curriculum of Black Panther indoctrination. Ma'am, you use taxpayers' dollars. Can I ask you one more time? I have no issue hearing what you have.
They don't want her to talk.
Not let the public speak? Why can't we let the public know that you're teaching our children to go out and murder our police officers? Do you want the proof? I have the proof. Is that what scares you, the proof? That a parent actually standing up against all of you? Is that what scares you, to call out the names of these people? You work for me. I don't work for you. You have a duty. We are entrusting our children to you. We teach our children morals, values, when they grow up to commit crimes and end up in prison and kill a police officer. It's our fault? No, it's your fault. You're emotionally abusing our children and mentally abusing them. You're demoralizing them by teaching them communist values. This is still America, ma'am. And as long as I'm standing here on this good ground, earth of God, I will fight. And I'm not, this is not the...
Did you hear that? The one school board, you can hear the one guy on the school board, he says, "I'll walk out." Listen to this jerk.
Abusing them. You're demoralizing them by teaching them communist values. This is still America, ma'am. And as long as I'm standing here on this good ground, earth of God, I will fight. And I'm not, this is not the last of me you will see. I'm retired. I have nothing else better to do. We can do it peacefully, or we can take it to the highest court, because you know and I know, I'm not the only parent fighting this all across America right now. Schools are trying to poison our children's minds, teaching them about things that they have no right to be taught in school. So, normally, no...
Trying to shut her up again.
Just give you, just a feedback for a moment. I have no problem having a peaceful discussion. This is not a peaceful discussion. No, that's your opinion. See, here we go again. This is peaceful. To me, this is peaceful. Well, I'm not burning, looting, and murdering. This is peaceful. I did not accuse you of that, but I don't have a problem having a conversation with you, a peaceful conversation, which is, this is not. $6.95 per child in the middle school to buy a curriculum from ReadToMe.org that wasn't even approved by the, by the Board of Ed. The administrators took it upon themselves to buy these books with taxpayer dollars while COVID is going on. How many families are struggling to pay their mortgages? Listen, by all means, you want to teach kids these things, fine, don't do it on my dollar. Don't infringe on my religious beliefs. Don't infringe, do you know who makes up the majority of this district? Children from police officers' families. Blues, back the blue children. Do you know what these children feel like when they come home? Have you spoken to them? No, you're silencing them. This whole cancel culture? You're silencing the children. Where are their rights? They have no rights. Because if they don't believe in the indoctrination, the demonic, twisted, sneaky, vile acts, and, and, and education, if you call it that, that you're teaching our children, they don't agree with that. They're either homophobic, they're part of a cult, they, they, they're racist. What's racist? Who defines racist? Why? Because I'm, do you know what race I am? Do you? You don't. You don't even have an idea. I could be black, I could be white, I could be Asian, you don't know. Who are you to determine that? Who is anyone to determine that? You know what? Children in the school system? Children, like other children, they don't look at color. Black and children, black and white children, Hispanic children, you know why they get along? Because they don't look at each other's color. So you're the racist, not them, not us. You're judging and dividing. You're causing segregation. Everything that we fought for, everything that I fought for, for years. So you have the right to stand here and tell me, "I'm not allowed to mention a name," when the person, Mr. Barry and Ms. Cyrus themselves? You have ELA teachers giving out assignments on police murder? Police are bad? You want the proof? Because we have it.
Did you hear, did you hear that? Did you hear that school board member in the back? She goes, she's, she's all out of breath. Okay. Okay, she's wearing down the school board here. I love it. This woman's awesome.
Not them, not us. You're judging and dividing. You're causing segregation. Everything that we fought for, everything that I fought for, for years. So you have the right to stand here and tell me, "I'm not allowed to mention a name," when the person, Mr. Barry and Ms. Cyrus themselves? You have ELA teachers giving out assignments on police murder? Police are bad? You want the proof? Because we have...
Okay.
What policies?
Now, the one, you heard the lady, the lady leading the school board meeting, she says, "Okay, we've got to stop this," she said.
Not allowed to go on social media and indoctrinate. They took an oath, a responsibility, and they're, they're going against everything that they stand for. Well, I understand.
Okay, now here's the other, now the man's standing up. "End, lady, get out of here. Go back home to the, you know, end."
End it? I have to end it? So, why? Why? You're on my dollar, why? Well, actually, I work for nothing doing this. Oh, you work for nothing. I do. This is a volunteer position, number one. It's still my taxes paying for everything. This podium is every taxpayer's dollar here. We have rights. We have rights. And you're making general assumptions? No, I'm not making assumptions. I'm not. I know what I'm speaking about. See, I don't agree with you, so it's an assumption. Well, I'm not going to engage in a back-and-forth with you about this. So if you would like to make an appointment, I would be happy to sit with the superintendent. I don't, I don't want to. The superintendent, the assistant superintendent already sent an email and stated that they had no idea that these books were being put in the students' hands. The superintendent already stated that they had no idea that the funds of taxpayers were supporting this. Black Panthers, do you know Black Panthers is a domestic terrorist group? Do you know that it was, it was condemned as a terrorist group? Do you know they kill cops? I have a problem when you're trying to kill a police officer. I have a big problem with that. I have a problem when teachers are passing out flyers, recruiting children to go to, to the courthouse, to protest Black Lives Matters, when you have people sitting with, with signs that says, "All cops are bastards." Really? All cops are bastards? No, I think you people are, because the way you're acting, and the way you're treating our children, and our police officers, and making them believe that it's okay to abuse them, I'll be damned if I'm going to sit here and let you do that. No, I will become your worst nightmare, because I'm going to stand here and keep fighting, and fighting, and fighting, and fighting. And if not, I can actually go out, get signatures? What happens if we stop paying school taxes? You're going to arrest all the community? The majority of the community? No, I don't think so. This won't be the last of me. I want everyone to know what's going on, because you're hiding it. You're hiding it. You know who does that communists do that? That's what you're doing, recruiting children. Children! You're recruiting children to hate our police officers. How dare you? You have a librarian in the high school passing out Black Lives Matter pins. When a student asks for a blue lie, why would I have that? Why would she have that? What did you do for Police, Police Week?
Now, here, here comes the school board. They're in a panic. Parent, you know, see, these school board meetings, nothing's supposed to happen in them. They let the parents come up and speak, so that they can vent and feel like they've had their say, but they really don't like you telling them anything. It's just for show, and they're getting, they, they can't keep their cool anymore, so now they're going to get disrespectful to her.
Why don't you tell me, sir? What is it you want to tell me?
You've had your two minutes.
You've had your two minutes. Get out of here, lady. You're not, you know, you're just a parent. You know, this unpaid school board, who acts like they're up here out of the goodness of their heart.
I don't need two minutes. I can, I can go as long as I like.
No, that's not the board.
No? Oh. Who, where does it say that I can't? Is there a law against that? We do have a policy. A board policy. Who, who makes these board policies?
The board.
The board. And who pays the board?
Nobody.
Nobody? The chair you're sitting on, we pay for. The lights that are on, we pay for. We pay for everything. You want to silence me because I spoke the truth? I spoke the truth. Everyone out there heard me, whether they agree or they don't, they're going to start looking into it. And now you're going, now you're exposed. That's all. It's going to end. This indoctrination and hatred towards our police officers, this systematic racism and cancel culture is going to end. You came to the wrong school district to do this, okay? You need to respect every child. So therefore, no politics should be discussed in school, whether it be conservatism, democratic, liberalism. You gave a, a, a survey after the elections. Why? Why did you ask students who they voted for? What did it matter? No answer, huh? You have no answers for me? I didn't expect an answer. That's okay, though. We'll get them some way or another. Same way you can't show us where all our money goes, right?
Do you hear the one guy at the school board, he says, "Oh, God." He says, "Let me rewind it." Do you hear, listen, you hear him in the background?
Expect an answer. That's okay, though. We'll get them some way or another. Same way you can't show us where all our money goes, right? That's what I...
Yeah. Wow, I mean, that's, that's an amazing woman. And I saw that in its entirety on Greg Kelly last night on Newsmax, and I said, "Sound bites ain't gonna do it, we gotta play the whole thing." So, let me give out the number, I wanna hear your thoughts on this. 1-888-GO-KANE-1. You know, I was saying, she should be traveling with the president, President Trump, at all the Trump rallies. Critical race theory is a critical part of this campaign, right? I've already heard President Trump talk about it. She would be perfect on the trail. She could, she could do a great, he, he could bring her up while she's speaking and the crowd would go wild. It would be like when he brought up Nigel Farage and all these other great people at different events. This would be amazing for President Trump to bring her up in the middle of one of his rallies. The, the crowd would, I promise you, everyone at a MAGA rally will have seen this video at least once. All right, let's take our last break of the second hour. Our number is toll-free, 1-888-GO-KANE-1, 888-465-2631, 888-465-2631. I'm Brian Craig. This is Florida's longest-running radio show, The Steve Kane Show, on the radio since 1977. We'll be right back.
Hi, my name is Tom Laporta, the owner of Laporta Contracting Roofing and Restoration. We have been in the roofing and construction industry since 1982. We are state of Florida certified roofing and general contractors focusing on residential and commercial roofing, impact windows, and building restoration. The 2021 hurricanes.
Hey, everybody in the, in the chat, there's about a thousand of you in there. Only about 400 likes, so if you could all like the video, liking the video helps with the YouTube algorithm to recommend this video to other people that, well, agree with us. So if you could like the video, that helps so much, everyone. And again, please subscribe as well.
Slay tile systems. Call us at 954-604-4602 for a free home inspection and estimate. Again, that number is 954-604-4602.
Brian Craig here. When it comes to auto repair, you want a garage that you can trust.
Well, the, the school board policy doesn't apply to parents in public meetings, you know?
The latest sponsor of the Steve Kane Radio Show. Tom called in on the radio to tell us about his experience with Champagne Automotive.
No one can convince me that these school board members don't get something out of being on that board.
I spent the last two days trying to get brakes for my car. I was leaving the house yesterday to go try another place that had a lower price. They wanted 800 bucks for brakes. And that advertiser came on for champagne. I was in Western Tamara, let me take a drive up there. Well, I was almost blown over how friendly, honest, old-school these people are.
Old-school, that's really the term to really describe it.
But let me tell you, the guy I had gone to previously, he wanted $800. He said, "Well, you need to change your power steering fluid." And Ed, the owner, put the car off on the lift, pulled the wheels, says, "You don't need brakes." And I about fell over.
Wow, well, tell me the end of the story, you got me hopes.
So it wasn't that your vehicle was misdiagnosed at the other place, you were dealing with a crook?
Oh, absolutely. This guy wanted to sell me everything but a washing machine. I don't want that.
Now, this is our new sponsor. We have wanted for a long time to have an auto repair shop. When it comes to auto repair, that is the most difficult category for us to find as an advertiser, because most are like this guy you were dealing with the other day over in Tamara, they're crooks. And we found Champagne Automotive, Ed, who's the owner, is a listener of the program. They come very, very highly recommended. So I appreciate you calling in and telling us the good story. Now Champagne Automotive, they're in Boca, Spanish River Boulevard, immediately west of Dixie Highway. The number is 561-245-8101, 561-245-8101. Listen to The Steve Kane Show on iHeartRadio. Just search for WWNN.
Good morning, you're on the radio. What's your name?
Good morning, my name is John Boydenbeach.
Hey, John, what's up?
Thanks God that woman, thanks God that woman confronted the board. I mean, they need, we need about a million more women like that with strong convictions to get up and show them that.
Well, you know, listen, this is the thing, you know, millions of people have seen that video. She was on, she was a guest on Greg Kelly last night on Newsmax TV after he played the video. You know, um, she's, she is, I, I, she's a Joe the Plumber type of this election cycle. And she's, she is becoming very fast, she's gonna be a home, a, a, a household name. And think about it, she's a, her husband's Muslim, and she's being embraced by the MAGA conservative movement. You know, they wanna call us Islamophobes, which is furthest from the truth. And she's an amazing woman, she needs to be at the rally with President Trump, gotta be there.
She's my hero. She is my hero, I'll tell you.
Oh, man, she makes, she's so good, she makes Marjorie Taylor Greene look boring.
She, she lets them know, she's watching them, she's watching what they're doing. And what she should demand is whoever ordered the books that weren't authorized to pay for themselves.
And I, and I mean, do you believe this school board, they're, they're not getting anything out of this? Oh, we're all volunteers. Come on. They're up there for the goodness of their hearts, you know, give me a break.
They're volunteer communists, that's what they are.
Exactly. Exactly. My favorite part of her whole speech is, "I, I, I have nothing else to do, I'm retired." You know, that scares, that scares the hell out of them.
I love it.
All right, take care, man. You're on the radio, good morning. What's your name?
Hi, Brian. As a substitute teacher, and as one who has seen a lot of antics around, uh, in the school, I say to this woman, and I say to every parent, "It's about time. It's about time." My gosh. Do you know these school board members, these principals, and these teachers used to revel in the fact that not a parent would ever come out? That not a parent would ever be concerned about his child, the child's curriculum? That they knew, and I used to hear them, that they could do anything, choose any textbook, and no parent would, would, none of, none of, be the wiser? I say to her, and I say to every parent, "It's about time."
Mm-hmm.
About time you get a hold of your children's curriculum, see what they're teaching them. Because they're teaching you stuff that's gonna hurt your household, that's gonna, that's gonna hurt them in the long run. And a lot of their behavior, unpredictable behavior, a lot of the influence that they are, they are taking on, comes right out of these textbooks and right out of these.
See, we gotta, see, this is, this, this, this critical race theory is, is, is a great thing for us, because it's woken up. Every time you hear a parent like that, double it, because there's two parents, okay? So there's two people. There are millions of parents, millions of parents that have been woken up to this critical race theory. And, and I know for a fact President Trump has seen that video and is aware of it. And this, this is, this is his build the wall message for this election. This is, this is, I heard him talk about critical race theory at the, at the rally on, 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 on Saturday night. This is a big issue, big issue.
And this is so since the Acosta's, the Jake Tapper's, and everybody else of this world, that they wanna shut him down. They wanna make sure he has no, he has no, no venue to speak. But I say to the parents of this country, "It's about time." Black, white, indifferent, Muslim, Christian, it's about time you see what your children are doing. I tell you, I had, I have a neighbor that's a department head in English, at a high school. They often talk about how these certain publishers and certain people get themselves into positions of influence, uh, Brian, and they create these textbooks, create these, these so-called, you know.
Well, my, you know, I've been following school districts and school boards for a long time, and from my experience, every single school board is a corrupt school board. Whether it's some deal, whether it's some deal with the computer company, the textbook company, or they just want vacations. So, you know, every, every school board is corrupt, especially if it's Democrats. And these people on this school board, this isn't about this, this is a nationwide plot, this critical race theory. Yeah.
Yes, it is. And I, believe me, there are some people that are shocked to know in about our own so-called ex-supervisor. They, they, they thought we were okay here in Broward, but we weren't.
Yeah. Our superintendent's, you know, got arrested. And you know what? And, and since I, um, my first, I can't remember the guy's name, but my first awareness of this, of the superintendent of our schools was when I was in high school. Every superintendent has been involved in corruption that I've known. I've never known a superintendent that didn't have corruption.
Every one of them, Brian, from, from DUIs and, 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 and stuff, and hitting people.
Yeah.
They'll start the bank.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Do it.
Yep, yep, yep.
The parents are broke, thank God.
Yep, all right, take care. Thanks, thanks for the call, Alonda. Good morning, you're on the radio. What's your name?
Good morning, my name is Lynn.
Hey, Lynn, what's up?
Well, this superpower is normal working taxpayers who paid for everything, like she said, don't have the time to trade Black Lives Matter to the Black Panthers. And people like Will Smith's wife, Jada Pinkett Smith, use taxpayer dollars to make a Black Lives Matter propaganda film that's shown in every school in America. And while they're indoctrinating our kids, we're, you know, we're busy working, paying for it. You can't trace it back to the 60s, the Weather Underground, and all this stuff that you need to know to understand what Black Lives Matter.
You know, what you gotta do is what she did, what she did was brilliant. She's just got, she's got the lesson plans, you read from the lesson plans, you know? And, and, and we heard it from this, this Yale psychiatrist, Kill Whitey. I mean, that's what we're, you know, I mean, that's, that's what it is. That's, that's what it is.
Well, they're starting to expose themselves now, but people are busy, they, you know, they come up with the word like Black Lives Matter, and then everybody's posting black squares on their Instagram. They have no idea they're supporting communism.
Well, well, this, this lady, I'm so glad I watched Greg Kelly last night, cause I, I almost didn't. I was, I was flipping over to something else, and my wife said, "No, let's watch Greg Kelly tonight." I'm so glad I did and saw this lady. She was a guest on the show, too. You guys should go back and, and catch it last night, cause the interview with her was spectacular as well by Greg Kelly. But I'm so glad Greg Kelly did this, because I know Trump watches Greg Kelly every day. So Greg, uh, so he knows about this woman, President Trump, and he's, he's out there talking about critical race theory. This is, this is gonna be the undoing of the left. They went, they went too far here. All right, listen, appreciate the call. If you're on hold, stand by, we'll take our break. You are listening to Florida's longest-running radio show, The Steve Kane Show, on the radio since 1977. Our number, toll-free, 1-888-GO-KANE-1, 888-465-2631. If you're on hold, stand by. Back with your calls after this.
We've got you covered. AM 1470, FM 95.3, 96.9, South Florida's FM Money Talk Radio Network, WWNN, Pompano Beach.
Brian Craig here. I've been telling you for years how great MyPillow products are, but don't just take my word for it. This is one of our listeners, Todd. He bought the MyPillow mattress topper, and he called us live on the radio to tell us about his experience with the MyPillow mattress topper.
Yeah, I'm falling, I'm falling, I might, MyPillow topper.
You ordered the MyPillow, the mattress topper?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, tell me about it.
Well, I, uh, I was thinking about buying a, a new mattress, cause my mat, my old mattress was getting old. So, um, my wife's like, "Why don't you try my, that pillow, that mattress topper?" So I went on, I used your promo code KANE, um, like a great, great price. Got it home, and I've been using it for the last three nights, but it's fantastic.
Oh, that's awesome.
It feels like a whole new mattress.
I talked to other listeners with the MyPillow mattress topper, and they come in all sizes. The mattress companies have turned into con artists. When I was a kid, mattresses were two-sided. You'd have the mattress, then after a while, you'd flip it over. Now you can't flip mattresses anymore. They don't make them that way anymore, because people weren't buying mattresses enough. So the mattress company stopped making two-sided mattresses. And mattresses are expensive. I've had to buy a new mattress, and mattresses can cost well over, just for a regular, normal mattress, over $1,000. So that MyPillow mattress topper is a big savings, it saves you from buying a new mattress, and, uh, turn your whole bed into a MyPillow.
Yeah, it's fantastic, I really love it. I sleep really good.
Well, that's great. Well, I appreciate that. You guys out there, remember, promo code KANE, K-A-N-E. Now, when you use the promo code KANE, K-A-N-E, at MyPillow.com, save 30% off your MyPillow mattress topper, and receive two free MyPillows. But you gotta use the promo code KANE, K-A-N-E. 30% off the MyPillow mattress topper.
A grifter? It's a con man.
Promo code KANE.
Another name for a con man.
At MyPillow.com.
The Steve Kane Show is brought to you by Attorney Barry Siegel at the Siegel Law Group. Are you concerned with the distribution of your assets at the time?
Make sure you're all subscribed and like the video, guys, if you don't mind. Tim Poole? I, I, I watch Tim Poole, I listen to Tim Poole. He wears the cap because he's bald. It's not a hipster thing, it's, it's cause he's bald. And I guess he doesn't wanna be seen bald. He makes enough money, he should get hair transplants.
Dial 1-888-GO-KANE-1. That's 1-888-GO-KANE-1.
He's not going bald, he is bald. All right, and I gotta tell you guys about Dr. Mitch Mitez at the bio station in hormone replacement pellet therapy. I'm a patient of Dr. Mitez, I have been for a long, long time. And many years ago, back in 2005, actually, Dr. Mitch Mitez was the first to bring hormone replacement pellet therapy to South Florida. It's a completely natural, um, treatment. And the hormones, they're, they're tiny little pellets, about the size of a grain of rice, before you add water to them. And they insert them, Dr. Mitez inserts them completely painlessly, in my case, it was totally painless, uh, right in the, in the hip area, in the rear. And what they do is they restore your hormone levels to where my hormone levels were when I was in my mid-20s. It increases your sex drive, your performance, gives you more energy, um, you know, and it's, it's, it's all natural, and it's wonderful. And you ladies out there, if you are suffering from menopause, hormone replacement pellet therapy, um, does everything it does for men, right? Brings back your sex drive, uh, your performance, gives you more, um, energy. You're, I mean, my energy levels, here I am right now, oh, man. Sound great, don't I? And women, it stops and completely reverses the signs and symptoms of menopause. So night sweats gone, mood swings gone, vaginal dryness gone and reversed. Also stops hair loss in both men and women, and the hair that you have left will grow back thicker and fuller. Give Dr. Mitez a call over at the bio station, a completely free consultation, but you gotta mention The Steve Kane Show. If you're on hold, stand by, you with us, Steve? Okay, all right. So, uh, how was the game last night? I figure it must've run late.
It was good.
Oh, obviously.
I ran late, I was up half the night, uh, half up, half asleep.
That's okay.
Those days, you know, those days.
Um, I don't know, maybe, I don't know a day like yours, but, uh, yeah.
Uh, I was excited listening to this tape you showed.
Oh, my goodness, I know, it's crazy, crazy.
But also, I, please forgive me this morning if I'm a little out of it, because I did not take my regular pill.
Yes. His prescription med, his, his prescription medications. I don't want people to think, yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna do the best I can, and half of what I'm telling you is, I was half-conscious when I heard it. So I was, uh, I was watching Tucker, or one of, one of the competition, to the show that you were talking about. And I was hearing amazing things on the radio. Uh, it was almost like everything had turned around, like all the things, the nightmare we've been living through.
Oh, I know what you, I know what that is, Steve. That was, that's called, you were dreaming.
Come on in, I did.
You were dreaming. You felt, now, you fell asleep to the news and you were fantasizing this utopian world.
No, it was not a fantasy. My fantasy, uh, who is the? I don't know.
I don't know enough, I can't read, I don't know where. Yeah.
Turned to crap.
Yeah.
And everything is collapsing. America's never gonna be the same again. Does this sound like?
No, it sounds like you were dreaming. It sounds like you were dreaming. But it's a great dream to have, though, Steve, it's a great dream.
And I'm listening, I'm listening to, uh, the television as I'm falling asleep, and all of a sudden, I was hearing all the right people, Man.
Yeah, yeah.
Much of what I was hearing was about him, and I saw him get up, and he gave a speech that Manchin, the Manchin I know and I'm familiar with, is kind of just a Democratic wimp.
Yeah.
This Manchin that I was falling asleep to, uh, wasn't a wimp at all. In fact, it seemed like he was getting ready to change his vote. In fact, somewhere in this, in all this chaos, he changed his vote, or he's changing his vote. And all of a sudden, all these things that we have been afraid of in terms of the excessive spending, and, you know, and all of a sudden, the Democrats in my dream were on the run here.
Yeah.
And we're about to lose everything. Was there sleep?
Eh, you were half asleep. I think what Manchin is saying is, listen, there's not enough earmarks in this, for me. Add some earmarks, reduce the overall number, so it looks like I did something. I, I don't know.
That's what you heard?
No, that's what I took from it. That's what I took from it.
I throw this out, you're not in a cooperative mood today.
Not cooperating, I'm cooperating.
I'm just throwing this out, if anybody has heard what I heard, because what I heard is basically that now that they're ready to take a vote, the votes aren't there, and they're gonna get their ass kicked.
All right. Well, if you're.
Well, that's right, you were watching the, uh. The other guy. The, uh, the guy.
I was watching Newsmax. Yeah. I was watching Newsmax TV.
Well, then I guess it was another show, must've been.
Well, we'll open up the phones.
He knows what the hell I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Called in and throwing your two cents, so Brian doesn't convince me that I'm crazy.
And cooperative sounds like, like, I don't know, that sounds like, I don't like that word cooperative. But, um, I'll throw out, if you're on hold, stand by, there's an opening on the board, uh, 1-888-GO-KANE-1. What you're talking about is the budget. No, they're gonna get their budget, but, but we'll see.
Part of it.
Yeah.
It was part of it, but it was more than just the budget.
Well, find out. We'll find out. We'll find out. Uh, 1-888-GO-KANE-1 is our number. If, if you've got some info on what Steve's, uh, talking about, was he dreaming? Was, what, you know, cause it, I don't know. One, yeah. It, well, that could be two, you never know, you never know. Good morning, you're on the radio. What's your name?
This is Augustina from Georgia.
Hey, Augustina, how are you?
Eugene, $10 super sticker, thank you.
I think that was the most powerful message I've ever heard, and I'm gonna thank Brian and you guys for playing.
I'm talking about the lady at the school board meeting, yes.
Yeah, the lady at the school board meeting, boy, she had them people all, all strung up.
Well, you know, about 5 million people, and I'm not exaggerating, it may even be more by now, have seen that talk. And this critical race theory is going to be the undoing of the Democrats.
Slow to get started, but the truth is starting to come out now. And these people can only operate in the dark. And now that people are getting a real idea of what this is about, I'm going to give the press their share of credit for the fact that ultimately things, you know, all's well that ends well. But this, what I was watching last night, I'd be very excited.
Brian, I want to give, can I give you credit for something?
Why not? If it's good, if it's something good, I'll take credit for it.
You went head to head with somebody that was a divorcee or?
Oh, you mean the guy that abandoned his wife and kids 10 years ago and now he wanted?
And another show you did where you went head to head with a lawyer.
Are you talking about Greg Two? Who says he's? Who says? All right. Now, if you're on hold on the school board lady, don't hang up, though, because we're going through all the calls. We're going through all the calls. Good morning. You're on the air. Good morning.
Brian, how you doing? This is Eric. Take it to a belt. How you doing?
All right, Eric.
Eric, what's up?
Hey, how you doing, Steve? Uh, Brian and Steve, I got to tell you something. That woman, that Karen, Tatiana from New York, that put that thing out there about the school, I'm glad she did. I'm glad she lit the fire under there because the one thing that she hit, she hit on so many quick topics, I'll be quick with you. That critical race theory, this white, this prejudice, this racism, this all this political machine that this Democratic Party is coming, this is the beginning of the end. And I'm glad she put it out there like that because she had her running like roaches.
Well, and it's not, it's, you know, this critical race theory has been exploding against the Democrats nationwide. And what it's about, it's the Democrats' attempt to try to win back the black vote that they've lost so much of because of Trump. And they're doing it through race division. And this woman here is becoming quickly a national figure. They're even running the story on Fox.
Right. Yeah, and I think Trump, definitely somebody who used to get in contact, Brian, either you or, somebody who used to get in contact with her and have run a Trump thing because that would be the beginning and end for the Democratic Party.
Well, like I said earlier, I know for a fact that Trump has seen the video. He was talking, and he was talking about critical race theory Saturday at his speech. And my guess would be it was because he saw this video. Because it had not gone completely viral yet, but it was out there. I think he saw this video before his speech Saturday night.
Right. And I think that's so awesome. But I just want to say I appreciate you taking my call, Brian, Steve. You guys have a good day.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. All right, now our number is toll free, 1-888-GO-KANE-1. You're on the radio. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, you're on the air. What's your name?
My name is Nancy and I'm just calling to say that my father used to say this like 65 years ago, the same thing that you're talking about right now.
What did he say 65 years ago?
That everything that we were taught when we were children was exactly what this woman is talking about.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
I'm just calling to say that because it's pretty amazing.
Well, one thing she, one thing she mentioned in that, it's really frightening. And this is apparently has happened in school districts nationwide. After the election, she mentioned this towards the end of her rant there with the school board. But this went on nationwide. After the election, schools passed out surveys among students to find out who their parents voted for. What are they, what are they doing with that information? With, how, who their parents voted for? That's amazing. They're getting the kids to rat out the parents. All right, all right, goodbye. Okay. All right, we'll take our break 17 minutes after the hour. Don't go anywhere.
Up there, saw the, I guess it was Tucker's show. It was MSNBC. It really made it look like the Democrats have had it in this coming election. They're losing every vote on every major thing. They don't even, actually, what I heard said they didn't even need Manchin because they had other Democrats lined up on the.
Yeah. All right, well.
It looks like that. Give us a.
All right, now we'll take our break. Our number 1-888-GO-KANE-1. We'll be back right after this.
I checked the temperature this morning before I left. The high today is going to be almost 90 degrees here in South Florida. The hot, hot weather, it's already here and it's only going to get hotter. On the line from Cut My Kilowatts, we have Scott from Cut My Kilowatts. He's going to tell you how he can save you big money on your electric bill.
We're facing the onslaught of summer here. And a lot of people are going to be noticing that, if they haven't noticed already, that their air conditioner is just running nonstop, fighting to keep the house cool. A lot of times, the air conditioner can't even keep up with the heat gain. You know, like you'll have that, the temperature set in your house at 74 and you'll look at the thermostat, it'll be at 76 or 77 or even 78. Even as high as 80. So what we do is cutmykilowatts.com. We've been doing radiant barrier in South Florida for 10 years. I mean, we did heat change hours probably 10 years ago when I first started doing this in South Florida. Radiant barrier stops the heat gain in the house, lowers the temperature in the attic, 30 to 40 degrees. Literally cuts the AC runtime in half and doesn't be a lot of money.
Let's explain to people what radiant barrier is. We have known Scott from Cut My Kilowatts for well over a decade. He's with us every summer here on the Steve Kane Show. In the heat of the summer, the attic, how hot does an attic get during the summer, Scott?
It can get, depending on what kind of roof it has with a shingle or tile, shingle being the hottest, 140, 150, even 160 degrees.
Yeah, and what that does is that 150, 160 degree heat in your attic makes your ceiling hot. And of course, your air conditioning ducts are in your ceiling. It heats them up and it makes your air conditioner work longer, harder, causing your electric bill going up, struggling to keep your house cool. So Scott has the radiant barrier. So tell people what radiant barrier is and how it works.
Radiant barrier is like a big aluminum foil tarp that goes on the underside of the roof deck, below the trusses, so there's an air gap, so it doesn't damage the roof. And it basically just turns the heat wave that comes down off the roof around and pushes it back up out the roof. So it makes your roof function like a white shingle reflective roof. You know, you see those white roofs on people's houses? They put them on because it cuts their electric bill 25, 30%. Same thing with radiant barrier. You put it in on the underside of your roof deck. You know, it's like a dollar a square foot. And we've got a special, if you spend $2,000, square feet or more, you get additional $500 off. So I mean, it's very reasonable. It's very affordable. This time of year, you know, you're getting it for half price, plus you're getting additional money on. We also do traditional insulation and we do ductwork. So we can do like the complete job in your attic, whatever you need up in your attic. Insulation, you know, radiant barrier, we can do the whole package.
Now, listen.
We do that for a lot of people.
It's getting hot today. It's going to be about 88, 89 degrees here in South Florida. We're not in the hottest heat of the summer yet. We will be soon. And because of that, Scott, he's offering a great discount before it gets super, super hot because as it gets hotter and hotter, it's more difficult for his crew to work in the attic. Now, it's not quite as hot. They can get the work done faster. It can spend more time in the attic. I want to give you Scott from Cut My Kilowatts. I'm going to give you his website and his number. If you miss this, it's listed at stevekane show.com. First, you can give Scott a call at 954-939-1500. 954-939-1500. Online, cutmykilowatts.com. And again, listed at stevekane show.com. Scott will save you money on your electric bill this and every summer. All right, Scott from Cut My Kilowatts. Have a great day. We will talk later in the week.
Hi, this is Lori Kane and I want to talk to you about Dr. Gupta at Brighton Dental Care. I just love Dr. Gupta. I've been seeing him for around three years. He always has time for me. He never does unnecessary work. And his prices are very affordable. And if you need implants, go see him because he has the best prices around. Let me give you the number. Write it down. It's 954-922-4633. That's 954-922-4633, brightindentalcare.com. He's just the best.
Listen to the Steve Kane Show on iHeart Radio. Just search for WW.
All right, we are back. I was just looking at CNN. They're coming out with a report on the Capitol breach. And I guess they've gotten an advanced copy of it. Capitol attack report omits Trump's role, is the headline. Maybe because he had no role in it. You know, sources say for the report to have bipartisan support, the language had to be carefully crafted and exclude the word insurrection. So they've got their report. Trump's not mentioned in it because he had nothing to do with. You know, I was talking about this earlier. If President Trump had any involvement in the Capitol breach, it wouldn't have been led by that Viking with his shirt off. It would have been led by a more competent person, not somebody, that there is. And this is a Senate report, which is, this is the Democrats'. So this is a Democrat report. They're going to call it a Senate report, but the Senate's, this is a Democrat report. A new Senate report reveals previously unknown details about the stunning security breakdowns ahead of the Capitol attack. Among the failures was an inability by intelligence officials to tie together, blah, 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 blah. But, yeah, so the Senate report, this is how I would word it. And I think, and I'll throw this out if you agree or disagree. The Senate report clears Trump. It clears Trump. Because if he had a role in it, why isn't it detailed in the report? Because they couldn't find a connection. And believe me, it wasn't because they didn't try. You know, and when they get into it, this Senate report includes information obtained in the interrogations of the 500 people they have in jail right now awaiting trial who went inside the building. I'm sure a lot of that was included in this. So the Senate has just cleared President Trump, no role in the Capitol breach, according to the Senate report. Now, it's not going to be promoted that way, but that's how I'm promoting it. Because I think that's what it says. All right, let me get to some sound bites here. Let's see, I got a couple here. Okay, here's Kamala Harris. She went to Guatemala. Well, I was talking about this earlier, Steve. I found out, you know Kamala Harris is only 5'2"? I was surprised to hear that. Yeah. I thought she was like 5'8", 5'9", 10 or something. She's a 5'2"?
She was, unless it was just a, they had her dressed up in the wrong dress yesterday. She seemed massively overweight to me. She's like, built like, what's the name of that guy from Nadler?
Oh, my gosh. Nadler?
Where? She's like, she's short and she's square.
Yeah, yeah.
Look taller than they are.
Yeah.
Wide.
Yeah, I didn't see that, yeah.
They might have just picked a bad dress for her. I don't know.
Does anything look good on her? But anyway, so here's Kamala, though, 5'2" Kamala Harris. That just kind of shocked me. I just was surprised. I'm not into height or anything. I just, you know, they must have like, I'm imagining they have like midget Secret Service guys around her so she doesn't look so short. You know, you know what I mean? Because I've never noticed that before. Anyway, here's Kamala in Guatemala yesterday.
I want to be clear to folks in this region who are thinking about making that dangerous trek to the United States Mexico border. Do not come. Do not come. The United States will continue to enforce our laws and secure our border. There are legal methods by which migration can and should occur. But we, as one of our priorities, will discourage illegal migration. And I believe if you come to our border, you will be turned back.
Well, it sounds like she's reading a Trump speech. You know, I mean, don't come and you're going to get turned back. And there's legal ways to do it and this is not legal. I mean, it's, it's Trump.
Ever, I guess.
Well, again, part of the end, she says, I believe you'll be turned back. I thought you're vice president. Don't you know what they do? What does she mean, believes?
Too late.
Yeah, well, you know, Trump says it and he's a Hispanicophobe. And Kamala Harris says it and they're celebrating. Did you see those strange cookies that she was handing out? Did you see this? Oh, my goodness. She had some cookies with her face on them that she was handing out to people. Cookies with her face on them.
Cookies.
Oh, my goodness. They were, yeah, so that's Kamala Harris. She's got an old, I guess they put a Trump speech up on the teleprompter. And, but Trump talked yesterday. He gave an interview with Stuart Varney on Fox Business. And this one, he's talking about his vice presidential running mate.
If you were to run for the presidency in 2024, would you consider Ron DeSantis, Governor of Florida, as your running mate?
Sure, I would. But, you know, there are numerous people that are great. I would certainly consider Ron. I was, I was at the beginning of Ron. I was the first one to endorse him when he came out as a congressman that a lot of people didn't know. And my endorsement helped him tremendously and I know him very well. He's a great guy. We have other great people. I mean, you look at some of the people that, Republican people that have done a great job with states. And you don't see that with the Democrats. I mean, they kept their states closed and locked down and the schools are closed. It's just absolutely outrageous how they get away with it.
So the reason I play that is he's, you can tell he's running. I mean, there's just no doubt about, I mean, the way he's talking, he's making plans and, you know, he's running in 2024. Every time he talks, it sounds to me like he's, definitely has decided to run. And then he went on, this is again with Stuart Varney. He's talking about Dr. Fauci.
I've got a headline in the Washington Post. It says, "Trump Allies Try To Rewrite And Restore History Of Pandemic While Trying To Villainize Fauci." Are you villainizing Dr. Fauci, Mr. President?
No, I always got along with him great, but he was wrong on so many fronts. And there's an example, you look at his emails, they're really horrible. He was in the pocket. It would seem he was in the pocket. Now, maybe not, but I, if you look at him, you know, we're all smart people. He was in the pocket of China. Pandered to them and the way he dealt with them. And I see, so that's their first salvo on trying to save Fauci. I guess last night Fauci made a trip with the current first lady.
Yeah, okay, so he goes on. So now he's saying that Fauci's taking bribes. I mean, there's no doubt about it. He's running. He's running and you can tell. And of course, that was Fox Business. So Fox, they don't carry him when he's speaking because they say he's not newsworthy. But all they're talking about is Trump and they're having him on as a guest. So is he news or not? You know, and you think they're going to carry these rallies in the future, Steve, on Fox? They didn't carry Saturday nights.
I worked on it tonight. I found it on one or two places.
Yeah, but Fox decided not to carry it.
Well, okay, yeah. It'd be just regular on Fox.
Yeah, Fox made a decision not to carry it. They were running Jesse Waters instead.
It won't let, when things pick up, believe me, Fox, if they want to have listeners, they'll include.
Yeah. Now, listen, it's 8:30. We'll take our break for the bottom of the hour. Our number 1-888-GO-KANE-1, toll free call, 1-888-465-2631. We'll be right back.
Paying an outrageous fortune for your tires. Go easy on your budget and buy your tires at Friendly Tire and Margate, where they have all the major brands like Goodyear and Firestone at discount prices that absolutely can't be beat. Steve Kane's tires for his Toyota van at the other shops, $175 a tire. At Friendly Tire, just $75 a tire. That's a $100 savings per tire. Tires for my daughter Emily's car, $135 at the shops around town. The price at Friendly Tire, only $65. That's a $70 savings per tire. These prices are out the door and on the road, free mounting and balancing and no added charges. Friendly Tire have a great selection of good used tires, too, starting at just $30 for most cars. Call my good buddy, Friendly Mike at Friendly Tire. Tell him what you drive and he will give you a great low price right over the phone. Online, friendlytire.net.
Hi, my name is Tom Laporta, the owner of Laporta Contracting Roofing and Restoration. We have been in the roofing and construction industry since 1982. We are state of Florida certified roofing and general contractors focusing on residential and commercial roofing, impact windows and building restoration. The 2021 hurricane season is upon us. If you have noticed any water stains on your ceiling or if your roof is older than 15 years, you will want to call us to come out and evaluate your roof. Our services run from minor repairs to complete new roof systems. We install every kind of roof from regular asphalt shingles, clay or concrete tiles, standing metal seam, wood shakes and slate tile systems. Call us at 954-604-4602 for a free home inspection and estimate. Again, that number is 954-604-4602.
Hello, I'm Mike Lindell, inventor of MyPillow. Here to tell you about my Giza Dream Bed Sheets. I made sure that they would be everything you'd ever want in a sheet set. I started with the world's finest cotton called Giza. It's only grown in a region where the Sahara Desert, the Nile River and the Mediterranean Sea all meet. The long staple cotton makes my Giza Dream Sheets ultra soft and durable. They come with extra wide pillowcases to fit over any pillow and extra deep pockets to fit over any mattress. Not only that, they come with my 60-day money-back guarantee and a 10-year warranty. And now you can get the best sheets ever for the best price ever. When you buy one of my Giza Dream Bed Sheet Sets, you'll get another one absolutely free. I personally guarantee that they'll be the most comfortable sheets you'll ever own.
Use the promo code KANE to check out and when you buy a set of Giza Dream Sheets, get a second set free. But you've got to use the promo code KANE, K-A-N-E, at mypillow.com or call 1-800-716-4879.
The Steve Kane Show is brought to you by Attorney Barry Siegel at the Siegel Law Group. Are you concerned with the distribution of your assets at the time of your passing?
Awesome, awesome, Bruce.
Call the Siegel Law Group, with nine offices throughout South Florida, from Palm Beach Gardens to Coral Gardens. Call toll-free, 1-855-FLA-3782.
Listen to the Steve Kane Show on iHeartRadio. Just search for W W N N.
All right, we are back. I'm Brian. Steve is here. Our number toll-free, one triple eight, go Kane, one, triple eight, four six five, twenty six thirty one. I was just reading this story. This is amazing. You know, we're talking about Fox and I carrying the Trump speech. On Friday, the five on Friday was number one in the cable news ratings, beating Tucker Carlson and Sean Hannity Friday. The five at five in the afternoon, as opposed to eight or nine o'clock at night. That really tells you how much people hated Juan Williams. You know, because people are tuning into it again. I mean, that's, to have a five in the afternoon show beating the primetime lineup a week after Juan Williams is gone, that's pretty amazing.
Very interesting.
Yeah, it sure is. It sure is. And that's why they should carry the Trump speeches. You know?
They will, they will. Get the time to wake up.
Hmm, I don't know. They got, you know, I, I don't know. You know, I was watching, let me play this clip. I played it earlier in the show. Jim Acosta was on last night with Wolf Blitzer, talking about the dangers of Trump.
As long as he remains out on the road and remains in a position where he can spread these big lies, I think there's the potential for more political violence in this country. And it just goes against, as you know, well, everything that this country stands for. We pride ourselves on not having this kind of political violence in this country. As long as Trump remains on the stage, it remains a strong possibility.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I hit that again. Yeah, so Jim Acosta is saying it's dangerous to have Trump on television. So that's their excuse to not carry it.
I think it's, I think it's dangerous to have Jim.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Jim Acosta has his own show now, five days a week. He only has that because of Trump. Trump made him famous. He owes his whole, he's too self-centered probably to realize this, but, you know, and I'll tell you, I was watch, I watch these press briefings now with Saki sometimes, and the guy from Fox, who's the young guy from Fox, Ducey from Fox, is the White House correspondent for Fox News. And every day, no matter what the controversy of the day is, he goes after Jen Psaki with it. And he's not like Jim Acosta, who's losing his mind and grabbing, he's always cool, calm, and collected, never grandstanding, never gets emotional like Jim Acosta. But that's, that's their excuse not to carry Trump. He's dangerous, and it's dangerous to have him on TV. That's what, that's what Acosta's saying. Good morning, you're on the radio. What's your name?
I'm Joe Riley.
You got to turn off the volume of whatever you're listening to us on in the background. You got to turn down the volume. And then talk on the phone. Okay, now.
Oh, okay, I'm on.
Yes.
Yes.
I was listening, I was listening to Bill O'Reilly radio conference today, and he said that we and Trump are having an event at the BBT Center.
You cut, you cut out, you cut out. You heard Bill O'Reilly talking about Trump?
Yes, Bill O'Reilly and Donald Trump are supposed to have a, an event at the BBT Center. That is, I think it's in June sometime.
Yeah, that's, now that, well, we're in June, and we're sometime in it. Yeah, that's the, that's the arena where the Florida Panthers play, in Sunrise by the Sawgrass Mills Mall, right? Yeah, I've heard, I have been told that, too, but I've not seen the details on it. And I don't know, is that, is that, is that a rally?
No, no, he's going to be talking about just backing sports with, with Trump, and they're going to be going on, have different venues in, I don't know, in Texas.
Oh, they're going to do like a road show. They're going to travel around and have conversations. Well, Bill O'Reilly and Trump are very close friends. Before he was president, they used to go to baseball games together and stuff. So, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. And Bill, yeah, Bill O'Reilly lives here. He lives in Fort Lauderdale. A lot of people will know that.
Buck Sexton, I was listening, you know, I listened to him, but I am, I am not a big fan for him coming out and replacing Rush Limbaugh.
Buck Sexton? I haven't heard him enough to have an opinion. The other guy that's coming from sports, I mean, they have him on Fox all the time now, probably because of this Rush thing. And I, and he, he seems spot on, but it's always about sports. So I hope that he doesn't turn the Rush Limbaugh show into a sports show.
Buck Sexton, you know, he talks about his girlfriend and going on and on about the Snow Princess. It's really.
Well, the problem, this, this will sound paranoid to people, okay? And maybe I'm paranoid, I don't know. But Buck Sexton, you know why he's famous and on everything, right? What is claimed to be famous?
CIA, yeah, well, I know he was a CIA agent.
He's a CIA guy. He's a CIA analyst or CIA agent or something. And that's a lifetime thing. Once you're a CIA agent, or whatever he was in the CIA, that's a lifetime thing. So I really don't like the idea that they've turned over the EIB network to the CIA.
Yeah, he sounds like a Trump fan, but you know what? There's some things that he, he says, you know, oh, Trump is going to be turning 80, he's not going to, you know, he says, this guy.
Oh, he's turning 80, so he doesn't, he doesn't like, he doesn't like elderly people. Well, you know, the thing about Donald Trump is he is not a mortal man. You know what I mean? I mean, he's, he's got the energy of like a 50, 60-year-old. That's why he's so successful. So I don't care if he's 80 or 90. You know, I mean, this guy we got now is asleep, Biden, you know? And I saw Trump the other night. I thought he looked great on, on Saturday night, and, and.
Some way.
Well, because he's on the golf course all the time, you know, walking and.
For news is becoming, it looks like.
Yeah, he looked good. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't see that, but I'm going to Google it or, you know, watch it on my phone. But Steve, I think what you're talking about maybe with Joe Manchin is maybe the HR1 and.
Yes, that was involved in it, too. It was just a whole big thing about how Manchin, they used to, the Democrats used to be concerned with Manchin's vote. And evidently now, so many people have, even on the other side, have turned in favor of the Republicans that they don't even need Manchin anymore.
Yeah.
Is basically what I saw.
Yeah.
That was air racing. I'm going to send it to my various liberal girl.
Well, I just, I just pulled up, I pulled up an article in Politico, okay? It says, "The Left Hates Joe Manchin. His Fellow Senate Dems Are Staying Quiet." Joe Manchin is, by the way, thanks for calling, appreciate that. "Joe Manchin Is Sparking Outright Fury From Liberals. While Some Black Democrats Invoking Jim Crow Laws Of Mitch McConnell As They Blast West Virginian's Resistance To A Sweeping Elections Bill, Manchin's Fellow Senate Democrats Are Being Far More Conciliatory." So they're pissed off at him about this. You know, here, here's the thing, okay? These voting rights bills and everything, they're, they're a little dated. I mean, you know, and when I go and vote, at least three quarters of the time, the people that are helping me at the polling location are black. You know? I mean, I don't think blacks are not only not being excluded from the polls, they're running most of them, it seems to me. I don't know what it's like where you vote in Cooper City, Steve. But I've never seen a black person denied voting. You ever see a black person tossed out of? No, I've never seen that, and I think it's been a while. And, you know, in fact, when I went and voted, in the last time I voted, there was a black woman who came in who didn't have ID. And she had three people helping her do a provisional ballot, so she could still vote, even though she didn't have ID. Okay? Good morning, you're on the radio.
Hi. You know, the Common Core, it, it kept surfacing under different names, and it was basically the same communist curriculum. But the reason that they did away with teachers had tenure, you know, they said it was unconstitutional. The only time they ever say something's unconstitutional is if it serves their interest to do so. They would get rid of all of the teachers who pushed back against Common Core. They didn't have a way to get rid of them. And then when they abolished the tenure, then they could get rid of anybody who pushed back against this new.
Well, this, this new curriculum that they're talking about, it's not, it's, it's not like old-fashioned books and lesson plans so much. It may be in some places, but what they've done is, most of the teachers are liberal, right? What they've done is, a lot of it has to do with teachers being able to freely express their opinions to the students on politics all the time. It's not like a lesson plan all the time, or a book that they're reading, or something they're doing. It's the teachers saying, you know, Republicans are racist Klan members, you know, and cops are killers. And I'm serious, that's what it's done. This critical race, a lot of it is about inappropriate things that teachers are saying on their own. It's giving them liberty to go rogue. And I, you know, I was talking to a caller earlier about this. The whole time I went to public school, I never knew the political affiliation of one of my teachers, ever. I can't think of one that I, looking back, I can think, well, this, you know, this person might have been a Republican, but, but I don't ever remember anyone letting us know how they vote and who they support. You know, so, and that's, that's the difference. That's the difference.
Teachers let you know a great deal about themselves, you know, their personal hobbies and whatnot, but they always stay away from political stuff.
Yeah, the only, the only time I knew, the first time I, I take that back. There was one time I found out two of my teachers were Democrats. There was a gay pride parade in Fort Lauderdale, and my math teacher and the home ec teacher, two ladies, were on the front page of the Sun Sentinel, marching in the gay pride parade. So we all knew they were gay. Well, we knew before, I mean, come on, you know? But you could tell by the way they dressed. But, you know, we, it was safe to assume they were gay activists and Democrats, looking back at that. But that's different. That's different than what's going on now. What they're doing now is they're basically getting up and saying, kill whitey. You saw that professor at Yale that talked about wanting to shoot white people? Yeah? And she's come out and defended herself since that, since she's been exposed.
I haven't heard speak at a Trump rally, boy.
Oh, the woman from the school board? Mm-hmm. And, and, you know, the Democrats have a problem with this lady from the school board. She's married to a Muslim man. So she has a, she has a Muslim name, and I don't know what her ethnicity is. She even said, she said, you don't know what I am. I could be black, I could be white, I could be Hispanic. She's like, you know, I can't tell what exactly. So they, they don't really know how to go after her because, but, you know, I kind of describe her, she's like Joe the Plumber was back in '08. And, and now that millions of people have seen the video, I promise you, the Democrats are already trying to find dirt on her. And God, God help this woman, because she's public enemy number one to the Democrats. Once that video hit 5 million views, that man, oh, we've got to discredit her. Like, and Joe, and Joe the Plumber, if you remember, all he did was basically say hello to Obama. Obama started quoting from Mao's Little Red Book, literally, and they went and got his sealed divorce records, the press, and released them illegally. Joe the Plumber, so. I wouldn't mess with that woman. She's scary to me. I mean, she, you know, she, she's, she's tougher than Laura Lumer and Marjorie Taylor Greene. I wouldn't mess with this lady. I saw her on Greg Kelly last night. She, she kicked, there's a, by the way, thanks for calling. I, there, Marjorie Taylor Greene put out a video of herself working out at the gym. She is a bodybuilder, Marjorie Taylor Greene. I couldn't believe it. She was in her workout clothes, and she was not doing Pilates or hot yoga. She was lifting up the huge barbells. I couldn't believe what I was watching. And she is built, Marjorie Taylor Greene. She should do, she should release more workout videos. I couldn't believe what, what great shape she was in. All right, listen, we're going to take our last break of the day, and when we come back, it'll be time for the Gold Report, all right? Don't go anywhere, Steve Kane is here. I'm Brian. We will be back right after this.
Attention seniors, Debbie from Iowa Advisors has launched Iowa Advocates. Iowa Advocates will make all of your doctor's appointments for you, handle your pharmacy issues, including refills, billing problems. They'll even make sure your prescriptions are filled. They'll review your doctor's bills to make sure they are correct. If you're in the hospital and you need an advocate to get the care you need, Iowa Advocates, they'll do that, too. They'll handle your Medicare and Medicaid applications, and that's just the beginning. They do a lot more, too. Give Debbie and her team at Iowa Advocates a call right now. Online, iwilladvocates.com. Never worry about your health care ever again. Let Iowa Advocates handle everything for you.
Hello, I'm Mike Lindell, inventor of MyPillow, here to tell you about my Giza Dream Bed Sheets. I made sure that they would be everything you'd ever want in a sheet set. I started with the world's finest cotton called Giza. It's only grown in a region where the Sahara Desert, the Nile River, and the Mediterranean Sea all meet. The long staple cotton makes my Giza Dream Sheets ultra soft and durable. They come with extra wide pillowcases to fit over any pillow and extra deep pockets to fit over any mattress. Not only that, they come with my 60-day money-back guarantee and a 10-year warranty. And now you can get the best sheets ever for the best price ever. When you buy one of my Giza Dream Bed Sheet Sets, you'll get another one absolutely free. I personally guarantee that they'll be the most comfortable sheets you'll ever own.
Use the promo code KANE to check out, and when you buy a set of Giza Dream Sheets, get a second set free, but you've got to use the promo code KANE, K-A-N-E, at mypillow.com, or call 1-800-716-4879.
Listen to the Steve Kane Show on iHeartRadio. Just search for W W N N.
All right, very exciting. It is now time for the Gold Report, brought to you by William Youngerman. And William Youngerman, and William, of course, those of you who've followed him for years, he is one of the world's leading experts on the precious metals, gold, silver, all of them. And we are so blessed to have him with us each day here on the Steve Kane Show, giving you an idea of what the gold prices and silver prices closed at yesterday, and what they are opening at today, with Father's Day right around the corner, another great place to do your Father's Day shopping.
Steve Kane Show.
Panting jewelry. Let's find out more. William, how's it looking today?
Looking like another buying opportunity day, Steve. We saw some nice gains yesterday, and some of those gains being given back this morning. Against the on a trading range, gold yesterday closed out at $1,898.90, which was up $6.90. Silver was up seven cents, closing out the day at $27.80 per ounce, while platinum was up $6 at $1,168. And palladium was up $26 at $27.66. As I said, we're giving back some of those gains today early on. Gold was up to about $1,904, putting in a range between $1,890 and $1,904 overnight. Our rate now, gold trading at $1,896, down $2.90, while silver's down 18 cents at $27.70. Platinum down $16 at $1,152. And palladium down $66 at $2,700. So the market's still stable, good support for gold around that $1,805 number, probably. Want to mention a few things. Bitcoin was down dramatically this morning again, down $2,600, that's $33,800. 10-year bond is hanging around.
Steve Kane Show.
25%, so, and Swiss Dollar Index at 90. So the environment is still very healthy for higher prices than the precious metals. Also want to remind our Steve Kane listeners, who are Bank of America customers, our bank branch is open again, so we are ready to cross the lobby from the Bank of America.
All right.
And make it easy for transfers to take place, about both in and out of your account. And that's one of the things that we've been unable to do for the last year because of the branches of the Bank of America that were closed. The bank is open again, so good, good news.
That is very, very good news. And I'll be stopping by later today, I think, to say hi to my good friends. They're so nice to you, William Youngerman. They hesitate, get great patience. They'll, they'll answer any questions you might have. And as I say, with Father's Day coming up, a plethora, I love that word, a plethora And as I say, with Father's Day coming up, a plethora, I love that word, a plethora of gift ideas for Dan on his day. So William Youngerman located at 150 East Palmetto Park Road in Boca Raton. That's the Bank of America building and right across from the bank that William was just talking about. Uh, you can get them on the phone at 1-800-327-5010 or go to the website, WilliamYoungerman.com. William, good talking to you. Maybe we'll see you later, all right?
Yeah, now if you're on hold, stand by now. Don't, what I'm about to give you is not medical advice, Steve, because I'm not a doctor, I do not give medical advice, but I give you my observation. You know, you joined us about an hour ago, right? And I know you were up late last night because it's NBA championship time, right? I mean, yeah, okay, so I know you were up very late last night and you started, the first thing you said was, "I'm not sure how it's going to go because I have not taken any of my prescription medications before the show today." And I got to tell you, you should not, you should take your prescription medications after the show in the future. Because I, I think you sound great, so I don't know. Again, I'm not a doctor, I'm just, I'm just, just listening with my ear.
You just think you're my doctor, doesn't it?
No, 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 I'm just giving you my opinion.
You've been giving your medical opinion for years.
Yeah, well, you know what those are worth, you know, nothing, but I'm just telling you, because when you told me you didn't take any of your prescription medications before the show, I was like, uh-oh, it's going to be a long 90 minutes and you sound, uh, you sound more filled with energy than, than ever.
Good to hear that.
Yeah. Oh, and also, I just want to tell you, this is very important, we got great news. Royal Caribbean, which owns the cruise line that we take our Steve Kane cruises on, we're going in January, the Steve Kane 2022 MAGA Cruise. Vaccinations are not required to go on the cruise, and I know a lot of you have been holding out for that. So call Ian 561-244-5779 if you've been holding out because of the vaccinations. Vaccinations, thanks to Governor Ron DeSantis, are not needed to cruise with us. So join us. All right, to the phones, you're on the radio, good morning.
Hey, uh, Steve and Brian, um, I just want to look back at the school situation in Broward County. I was a parent and I got it from the library, the Broward County Library, reading material for children. And I'm reading, I'm reading, it says Archives for Sexuality and Gender. And they go on to say, "We're exploring all aspects of sex education, gender roles, social movements, activism and erotica."
Erotica? Well, let me, hold on now, let me, I'll slow down, I'll tell you this. When I was in high school in Broward County at Stranahan High School, which was a dump crack den, and all the crack dealers went to school there. And, um, they had in the school library, the Joy of Sex. In the school library, and if you've ever seen it, yeah, I do, because we used to all get out and look at it. And it's, uh, it's all very graphic drawings of every sexual position you could imagine and some you can't. And, uh, and it was in our school library. So, you know, it's kind of like the same thing in a similar way, although, although it was all about heterosexuality. There was no, you know, cross genders and gay stuff in there.
It was the same but different.
It was the same but hetero.
Yes, I, I complained to my, uh, school board member, he was not interested. So I went to the Broward County Library Administration and complained there. That was the only place to complain, but at least I did my bit. But, uh, it was so odd, erotica really struck me.
Yeah, that strikes a lot of people. All right, take care. Good morning, you're on the radio.
Hey, what is this thing with Jimmy Kimmel saying that we're, we're like Florida's, uh, North Korea, you heard the back end?
I did see that headline, but I don't know what that means. Has North Korea been liberated now? And is like the freest place in Asia? What does that mean? Because Florida, you know?
He was trying to kind of, I think he was trying to make fun of Trump saying that we did, I mean, he did a good job in Florida saying how we wanted like, uh, communism and like North Korea.
Well, maybe he should go talk to J Lo, his friend J Lo that's on his show all the time, because she loves it in Florida. And, you know, J Lo's in Florida because she can work out without a mask during the pandemic and other things. I don't know, you know, I don't know. I don't know. All right, listen, we got to, we got to run, but I, but I appreciate the call. Take care, we should have called a little earlier. Because I think with Jimmy Kimmel, I, I did hear that, he said that Florida is now North Korea? You know, I have a t-shirt that my wife got me this week, Steve. It says, um, "Make America Florida." You know, it's kind of a.
Florida, that's a query.
Isn't it? Yeah, I'll say, I'll wear it tomorrow, I'll wear it tomorrow. Yeah, it's a good one. Oh, let's check in with Richard Pearl, his, his show, Richard Pearl on Politics, of course, on this radio station, weekdays at noon. Hey, Richard Pearl.
Hey, good morning. We've got a lot to talk about on, uh, Thursday as well. Uh, we're going to talk about this new Alzheimer drug for, that's pyogenetic, a drug that has very little evidence that it works, but it shows how corrupt the FDA is, that they're approving a drug that they can't even prove that it works well. And they're saying that's definitely well, if it does work, then it will make sense to do something about it. Why do you, they want it because of the, you know, they asked, it's been approved, why did the study before it's approved? This is going to bring $70,000 revenue, uh, to, uh, probably, it's all general rates of the cost for Medicare premiums because it's very expensive, it's going to be $6,000. You're taking monthly, and it's, it's evidence that it has, it's evidence, it's the book, the book, get rid of a book called, you know, Amaloy. Um, and it's something, or Amaloy dating, calling, whether it's, uh, a drug, it's unnecessary if you could use a potent oil, it's sugar out of your diet. Take a couple of, natural products, it's been dealing with, uh, special or Alzheimer's patients, died of Alzheimer's, and made a formula that works incredibly well for people with conditions of mind. And if you take that along with a couple other drugs, like, uh, brain awakening and detox for the brain, take coconut oil, you'll get a more effective and less harm.
And I, you know, and I've talked to listeners who have used that supplement that you have over there, this brain, uh, what's it called again, Brain Factors? And, uh, they rave about it. And, and in fact, one of the listeners, they didn't use it, their spouse did, their husband did, and they were raving about, they saw, they saw a change in their, in their husband. Now, we don't have time to get into this today because we're about out of time, but I was talking off the air to one of our listeners who's, um, sadly suffering from, from cancer, and they were telling me they use a lot of products of yours over there at Simply Natural. Listen, Richard Pearl's radio show is on our. Absolutely, absolutely. Now, Richard Pearl's radio show, weekdays at noon on this radio station.